To the June 12th Select Board meeting. And before we go any farther, I'd ask you to raise your hand and say a pledge of allegiance to the flag.
Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
First part of our meeting, I'm going to take up the transmission of Treasury warrants. Warrant number 202347. 202347 W.I.R.E.S. 47A. 202348. 202348 W.I.R.E.S. 48A. 202349. 202349 W.I.R.E.S. 49. Do I have a motion to accept?
So moved.
Second.
Second.
Alls in favor by here? Unanimous. I have one minute from May 8th of 2023. Do I have a motion to accept?
So moved. Second.
Alls in favor?
I'm going to abstain now. Isn't that the speaking?
Very good. Now we'll go to our appointments. We are looking at, uh... MH Pizza and Fried Chicken, Inc. Why don't you come sit down right up here? I know there was a little confusion last time you were day, uh...
Yeah.
Early.
Yeah.
Why don't you stop by telling us about yourself and how you're planning on running your business?
Hi, my name is Anwar Khan. Uh, I'm the new manager at Greg's. Unfortunately, the boss was supposed to come in today, but he had a little bit of an emergency, so he could not come in, so I came into his place. Uh, so we are first-time pizza buyers, so we've never had a pizza place before. So that's why it was a confusion with the paperworkers because of the, um, of being transferred over from the previous owner. Not everything was done at the same time, so it just a little time... Took a little time to transfer everything over. Some stuff went through, that's why there's double permits that have been filed and a, uh... Sorry, I forgot the name of the vacancy permit. The...
Common Victular.
Yes. Because that wasn't done. And this all started because of that, because, uh, we didn't... At first, I didn't... We didn't know we had to do that. That was part of the permit.
Sure.
That's why we had to do it again.
So you're... I see here you're gonna do pizza, fried chicken, you're gonna have other foods there?
At the moment, no. Nothing... Nothing at the moment, no.
Recommendations?
Mr. Hall, we have all the documents from...
Yes, so recommendations. We have a recommendation from the Health Director, Shelley Newhouse, that she has no concerns is recommending the Common Victular be issued. Also, the Building Inspector, Al Spalding, there's no issues with respect to zoning and, uh... So he has no concerns.
Okay, before we take a true vote, do we have any... Board members have any questions, sir?
Just welcome to Wilmington. I wish you a lot of luck. I hope, uh... Hope you have a good, successful business and...
Thank you.
Go forward from there.
Thank you. Thank you so much.
Do I have a motion to...
Mr. Chair, but just before you entertain a motion, I would just note, um, that your insurance certificate or the company's insurance certificate expires on July 13th, so you just want to make sure that the folks that are...
We already, uh... The boss already sending the paperwork to have it renewed.
Okay.
Yeah, so already been sent out, so I think two, three days ago, we actually was talking about that because they have to be renewed in July.
Right.
And so there is... Here is submitted the paperwork to be done.
Good enough, thank you.
Mr. Chairman, I move to grant the request.
I'll second.
Alls in favor? So moved. Congratulations. We wish you the best of luck. Welcome to Wilmington.
Thank you. Thank you so much, guys. Thank you.
The next appointment... Next appointment is for Chief Desmond and Sergeant Wendell.
Good evening.
Good evening, Chief.
Sergeant Wendell could not make it tonight, so I'll handle the duties here. I hope this is an easy part of the night for you. So I hate to... I don't want to rush the summer away, but I'm here today asking for your blessing and permission to use the field across from the Police Department on August 1st for our National Night Out. This is, I believe, our ninth one. It's probably our largest community outreach we do as far as people that participate. It's always been a pretty good success. I'm looking forward to another event this year. We are just starting the process of, uh, you know, reaching out to different agencies and, you know, seeing who's gonna show up this year. But for those of you who have attended it before, it's primarily a chance to come out and meet local, state, and federal law enforcement. Court of, you know, sort of ask questions. There'll be bills, displays, things like that. It's usually a good time for all ages, and we're hoping to have a nice event this year as well.
Uh, you're not planning anything different? It's gonna be the same?
Yeah, it'd be the same. It's always the first, um, you know, Tuesday in August, so this year would be the first. Time will be from 5:00 to 8:00 p.m., usually when we do it, though we don't kick people out at eight if they're still having fun. We can stay as long as you want for the most part.
Mr. Chair, I'll make a motion that we take the 13 out of order, the board to consider.
Next, what my next...
And make a motion that we approve Tuesday, August 1st, 2023 National Night Out festivities. It's a great... A great event, and certainly the town turns out in support.
Yeah.
Guys do a good job.
Second for discussion. Mr. Chairman?
Yes.
Thank you.
Go ahead, sorry.
Chief, thank you for being here.
Sure.
And I totally agree with my colleague, Mr. Kira. This is a terrific night. We always have it circled on our calendar, and I just wanted to say that, obviously, I think most of us are well aware, this is a difficult time to be in law enforcement in our country. And unfortunately, sometimes folks will see what goes on nationally or in different parts of the world. And this is a great opportunity for people who haven't got to know you or your department on a first-name basis or on a face-to-face basis, and I invite everybody to come on down and see what a great job your department does and just see how compassionate they are and the great relationship that they have with our residents here in Wilmington, which we're really grateful for. So I encourage everybody to, uh, to join us. It's always a great time. So thank you for doing this again.
Thank you.
I concur with what both Mr. Kira and Mr. Bendel said. So it's a great event, like Chief said, for all ages, but I do know the young kids have a blast between, you know, meeting all the law enforcements, you know, the trucks and the cars and stuff, but... And the parents. It's just an awesome event, but I do think it's really important, especially today, for people to get down and, you know, get to see and meet our law enforcement, so personnel. So I hope people will go. It's a great time. Look forward to it.
I just... Just wanted to echo everything said and hope it's a good night and lots of people show up and we'll see you there.
Fingers crossed, yeah. Thank you.
Chief, it's always a fun night. And I believe that the men and women of Wilmington PD deserve a lot of respect for the way they treat them, they act during their shifts, and also people get to know you. And, uh, it's more smiles than everything, anything. You can see the kids are all excited, but what's... I always get a kick out of is the adults that are just as excited.
Yeah.
Yes, it's fun.
Big kids.
Yep.
It's all we are, is big kids.
Yeah.
And I wish you the best of luck as always. Be seeing you there as always and, uh, have fun.
Thank you. We appreciate the support. Thank you.
Thank you, Chief.
Take a vote.
A vote on accepting the night out?
Yep. Board consider.
So moved?
Second.
It was second.
I think there was already a...
It was a second.
Oh, sorry, Greg's second. Okay, so all in favor?
Greg, yeah. So vote. Five. In favor?
Chief's like, okay.
And if you would just go out and tag all the cars.
Oh, shit. I think I'm in the woods.
Thank you very much, Chief.
Thank you.
Have a good evening. Moving right along, our next... Our next appointment is with Jamie.
So, Mr. Chair, if I could just introduce the topic a bit, we have Jamie McGoldy, our Public Works Director, and Paula Looney, the Town Engineer, and they're gonna talk a bit about a request to redirect some of the funds that we have in the...
Chair's broken. I might want to switch it.
Oh.
He got the chair, sorry. He was trying, and I was like, I didn't want to interrupt, but you got it.
Yeah.
It's usually behind here somewhere.
Oh, I'm trying to give it to Jamie.
Buy a lottery ticket on the way out of here.
Sorry, Mr. Hall.
So, um, you'll recall that the town received a little over $7 million in ARPA money, and initially, when we developed our plan, 1 million of those dollars were targeted for some stormwater efforts, but, and they'll speak to the details here, but there are some more pressing issues that have come to the fore.
All right, thank you, Mr. Chairman. Thank you, Jeff, and good evening to the board. Jamie McGoldy, for the folks at home that don't know me, Public Works Director here tonight with Paula Looney, our Town Engineer. Not to repeat what Jeff said, but we're here to request a reallocation of the American Rescue Plan Act funding, also known as ARPA, to two projects that have recently become a higher priority. As you recall, in November of 2021, the town prepared a plan to spend down approximately $7 million in ARPA money. Of that funding, $1 million was earmarked to retrofit some of our existing stormwater catch basins to include deep sumps for stormwater quality. That is an important project, but it is lower in priority, and at the time, it was seen as a creative and progressive way of spending down that money while supporting our stormwater campaign. So since that time, the eligibility requirements of earmarking that money have broadened a little bit, and funding has been reduced from $1 million down to $206,000 for that project. So we're here requesting to redirect the remaining $206,000 from this lesser priority project to two other projects that have recently elevated in priority. So the first one is the replacement of two finished water pumps at the Sargent Water Treatment Plant. This project is in the FY '23 water budget, but it was to refurbish these pumps. So what's come to light is the contractor pulled one of the pumps and realized that the pump was beyond repair, beyond refurbishment, so we do have to look at replacing these two pumps fully, and so we'd be looking to redirect $100,000 from that remaining $206,000 to cover that project. The second project is the Middlesex Ave Sewer Project, and as you know, due to unforeseen groundwater issues during last fall and last winter, it caused unexpected delays and eventual change orders out there. So we're requesting $106,000 from the existing stormwater catch basin project to cover grinding and paving the permanent sewer trench on Middlesex Ave. If you go out Middlesex Ave, you'll see that trench there. That is a temporary sewer trench. It's very rough riding. So what this would do is it will allow us to do what we fully intended to at the start of the project, which was to permanently patch that trench to improve the rideability of the road. So that's essentially it. This will essentially eliminate the catch basin retrofit from the ARPA plan until such time that we might come across additional grant funding or even use NIPD's funding down the road to get that project done. And so in conclusion, we see this reallocation of ARPA funding in the best interest of the town, as both of these projects have an important and immediate impact on the town's infrastructure, and they have an immediate need right now. This time, Paula, I would be happy to answer any questions for you.
Questions? Mr. Kira?
Jamie, just reading this, um, I understand trench go underground, right? But the top part of the paragraph says that the sewer main was... Is above the culvert? And, uh, is it gonna be located under...
Yeah, I can...
Below ground? It says above or...
It's installed above the culvert and under the road, so...
Above the culvert, under the road.
Yeah, actually, it's under the sidewalk.
Oh, okay.
That was one of the changes, originally that sewer main was going underneath the culvert, but the groundwater was so high last fall and last winter, so that was one of the things that we changed with the project.
And then my second question on the... On the water treatment, um, anything to do with PFOS? Is that under control?
No, this is... Right, so these two pumps strictly take the finished treated water and send them to our distribution system. So these are not treatment pumps, they're essentially just pumps that take the treated water after the treatment process and send them out to distribution.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Good evening, gentlemen. Thank you for being here. One of the things I've learned in my short time here on the board is that when either of you come forward with a initiative, that I can feel comfortable in supporting it. And the fact that you're both here tonight gives me great confidence, and residents should as well. So I, uh, I look forward to supporting this, and I thank you for... Because I know that you've done your homework here, and this will be the right move for the residents. So thank you both.
Thank you, Mr. Bendel. Thank you.
Yeah, thank you. Thank you both for being here and walking us through this. And I too, I support this. I'm confident in your assessment and where the needs go. What are we looking at for a completion on the 62?
Okay, so substantial completion for the culvert project, the bridge project by 6/26, June 26th.
Oh, wow, okay.
The first pour of concrete sidewalks happened today. We have a second pour happening next week. The end of this week, there's three drainage structures left to install. Those are three tree box filters, and that's part of the water quality initiative, which I think speaks a little to using some of this ARPA funds for this project as well. From that point, final paving is scheduled for 6/21 for the section just over the bridge. Right, so that's about where the dry cleaners is now, going just easterly of the, um, of the bridge, and then striping on 6/26. Those are scheduled, and of course, it's subject to mother...
Sure, of course.
But that's like the final push for the culvert. On the sewer project, we have a generator on backwater, national grid, gas service, trying to get that in place or scheduled, and fencing, control panel install, but that's all pump station work. That's off the beaten path, to speak. It's off of Jefferson Ave, so we won't see much for impact to traffic disruption along 62. And then that would... That's likely to happen early July, end of June, early July, mid-July timeframe.
That's great.
And then the final trench paving that Jamie had mentioned for the linear force main, that'll happen mid-July. I actually had a phone conversation with the sewer contractor at like 6 o'clock tonight to go over timing of that. So we want the culvert project to be done.
Yeah.
Final paving, and then have the sewer contractor come in and put the permanent trench, uh... Permanent patch on their trench.
Great. No, that's... That's great. Thank you both. I appreciate it.
No, I actually was concerned about the completion dates as well, and so it's nice to hear that everything will theoretically be done on the 62 by the end of the month or thereabouts. Like you said, Mother Nature and other forces. Hopefully, hopefully, everything's with us.
Definitely in the home stretch, and it's almost been one year. Actually, it'll be a year in July.
Yeah, right.
So this time last year, we were planning the, uh, the mobile trailer for the fire department in North Wilmington and...
That's right, yeah.
Happy to see everything's coming to a close.
It'll be nice to see it done prior to Friday on the 4th, all close to it. Everyone, I hope everyone understands whether, uh, other issues may come up, but it's nice to see it getting completed. I wish you nothing but the best of luck with it now.
Mr. Chair?
Motion to...
I'll make a motion to...
Yeah, that's what I was gonna say.
Board to consider the 13 out of order, redirecting the ARPA funds of $206,000 for the sewer infrastructure and culvert project.
Second. Alls in favor?
I would also just ask if that also include the, um, the two pump projects, the two pumps as well?
And, yeah, and the two pump projects, which it wasn't listed on the... On the board consider, but now it is.
Reseconded.
Absolutely. Perfect. Thank you, gentlemen. Appreciate it. Have a good night.
Just amend the motion to include...
I'll second the gentleman's motion.
Yep.
Okay. Alls in favor?
Thanks, guys.
Thank you.
So moved. Thank you. And next up, uh, 7:45, we're running right along here. Doran Whittier, SMA.
So, Mr. Chair, just by way of introduction, you may recall, we have, uh, with us tonight from Doran Whittier, Lee Door and Don Walter from Doran Whittier, and then we have Julie Lettich from SMMA. Also from SMMA is Sarah Tryonelli from SMMA.
Thank you. Welcome to our board, Select Board, and we're gonna be discussing the additional grade configuration options that you have made a proposal for or the team has made a proposal for. And go ahead and show us your power.
You guys wouldn't happen to know if it's this keyboard or... Oh. Thanks for having us this evening. We appreciate the opportunity to get back before your board and just give you some updates and clarifications kind of on our process up to date, and certainly hope we can answer any questions that you folks might have. Tonight, we just want to give you an update. Since we met you last from our meeting, we have had some other conversations with MSBA as this process is fairly fluid, as you guys know from our last meeting. Talk a little bit about the outcome of some of those conversations and what we have on the table still for design enrollment options, the schedule impacts of such if either of those were to be followed, and just kind of summary of the next steps in the process. By way of project update, these were some of the takeaways we had from our joint meeting that we had, and, you know, these are kind of our interpretations and the leadership team, if we had a chance to kind of debrief a little bit after our meeting. And one of the things we know is that any project that changes the current status quo of your grade configurations is gonna have an impact on the town, the entire town, and not just to any particular one project, and that's important. We also heard that moving fifth and eighth grade may have some educational challenges. It may also have some just challenges of being out there in the public with how parents perceive, you know, age of students and where the appropriate place is. So we realize that that option that was presented comes with some challenges and some things that would need to be worked through. There appeared to us to be some type of support for consolidation in some form or shape, you know, whether it's, you know, going from six schools to three schools or six schools to some other number. There appears to be some movement, and I'm coming off this, well, at least some recognition that the, the current configuration is difficult, both educationally and operationally and financially for the town. There's a desire, we heard, for a district plan for the entire town, and what we mean by that is if there is a project and the outcome of this process is there's a consolidation as a project to take care of three existing elementary schools, that there's some type of plan on the table or some discussion about what's gonna happen with the remainder. And we just feel that that's important to communicate to the town, kind of what is the plan, what are our options available to us as we move forward. And there appeared to be some support for exploring one of the options that we looked to ask that we have MSBA consider, looking at a district-wide solution. Not everybody was on board with that, and we're not asking anyone to pick that as an ultimate solution. We were just looking for an opportunity to study that, to bring that information back to the community and have that as part of your evaluation process. Since that meeting, we had a call with some folks at MSBA on June 8th. It was just last week. And in that call, we had several members of MSBA that are fully aware, because they've been in part in the conversations and they've watched these meetings and the process unfold. And what they had told us is they're willing to consider requests within the limitations of their system. And I think it was important that we heard that, the fact that how MSBA thinks about projects, and you guys probably know that we're not the only community in their pipeline. There's lots of other communities that they ask, and we're certainly very fortunate to be where we are in the pipeline. And they have some certain limitations based on how they set up a budget when they said we're welcoming Wilmington into our pipeline. And at that point, they had said, you know, the kind of the biggest option that they had considered at that point, at your statement of interest, was an enrollment of 755 students. And based on that, they said, we agree to work with the town and take a look at that. And part of their math and calculus for all the towns that are coming up after us is based on those calculations. So they've kind of have that in place right now. They've accepted other towns into it, and so they wanted us to understand that it's not because they're not interested and they don't understand the challenges that are here in Wilmington, but they also wanted us to understand, you know, certain limitations that they have as a program. So that was an important part of the conversation. They did restate the fact that they're willing to participate in any of the projects that you've already been approved for, and they would be willing to look at a pre-K district-wide project, but they can only participate up to that enrollment number of 755. So in other words, if you were to build a 1,500 student to try and consolidate everything, they would reimburse for the cost that would be eligible for a project with 755 students. And again, this is MSBA staff we're talking about, and it's important to know that the board has the final decision. We're just trying to get some information to kind of read the tea leaves, so to speak, of what's available to us. Questions that everybody has is would the community even support something on the scale of a district-wide solution? To be determined. We have also have lots of questions on where could that be? You know, is it appropriate educationally for, you know, uh, building that size and all of the questions that go along with that? We talked a little bit, and we've talked, I think, at our last meeting, some of you brought up these good points too about enrollment fluctuations, and we had talked at that point about an option potentially to move fifth grade up and eighth grade up and discussed lots of challenges with that potentially, and also what happens if we do that? We didn't want to kind of paint ourselves into a corner where we maximize our capacity at all the buildings, and then if something happens with your enrollment and it continues to grow, and we've just built a consolidated project and we filled up the high school, middle school, then what happens? So certainly a fair question, and it's something that would have to be analyzed. But MSBA did express some concern about all the things that we've all been talking about too, the appropriateness of the fifth grade and eighth grade moving up. And one of the things they said, if we're looking at an option that really touches on every grade level in the district, it's a little bit different animal than what we submitted a statement of interest for. So if we were interested in pursuing a project where MSBA was a full participant in a pre-K through whatever grade configuration that took care of all six of the elementary schools, they believe that what would have to happen at that point was we would have to disengage from what we're doing now, abandon our application that we've been accepted, redo a statement of interest to them with the ask of we're looking to a district-wide solution with full participation from MSBA. And there's certainly no guarantees you would get back into the program at that point. So that was a word of caution, and we're certainly appreciative of that. They did talk to us a lot about, they have a lot of experience with this, working with many communities that face similar challenges to Wilmington, understanding that you've got lots of schools that are in need, and how does the town look to approach this in one step, multiple steps, and trying to understand what that kind of district-wide plan is. And I think... And I think we all have those same questions, and that's what we're trying to look for answers to. So, what is in the best interest for Wilmington? The current options that we have, and you guys are familiar with these right now, just looking to replace in kind the Wildwood School with pre-K to K. It's approximately 130 students plus the pre-K. We also have an approved pre-K to three potential option that would look at the Wildwood population and the Wilburn population as part of a consolidation. And pre-K to five at 755 students, which takes care of Wildwood, Wilburn, and North. After our conversation with MSBA, what we've come to kind of understand is MSBA has some concerns about the pre-K to four options that we had discussed at the last meeting. We felt those in attendance had some concerns about that, as did we. There were a lot of unknowns with that. And knowing that MSBA said, if you're interested in looking at that pre-K four and touching every grade in the district, you would probably have to get out of the program and then try and reapply. We thought that would probably make sense to take that pre-K to four option off the table as far as the MSBA program. And so, what we are left with is to try and have an option on the table for the community that at least looks at what a solution could be if we're trying to do a full consolidation for all six projects. Not that you have to agree to it, and not that that would be the best plan, but to be able to have an option at the end of the day that's gone through the process, and the community understands if we were to do this at this point to solve all of those problems, and the state's only participating up to 755, what are the economics of that for the community? So, you have kind of a benchmark, if you will, of this is a starting point if we're trying to take care of all of our problems versus just here is a single pre-K to five school with full reimbursement from MSBA. It will help, I think, help guide some of the future decision-making about what happens. So, at least you'll have tools and current information available about costs that look at both sides, the whole six schools within the community. So, right now, there is an option to ask MSBA if they'd be willing to consider, and this would be the formal request that we're asking, is for them to write us back to say, would they consider a pre-K to five district-wide solution, understanding that they may come back and say, we only reimburse up to what we agreed to you before, but we'll allow you to proceed and study this. We talked a little bit about schedule impacts, and I do wanna clarify in the handout we sent to you, that gold star that says June 2023 right now, and your pocket says June 2022. I apologize, we had a typo in there, from '22 to '23. It's June 23 right now. We're in the feasibility study phase. If we were to stay the course with the three options that we had, this is approximately a seven-year process to get into the building. To go through the process, we're asking is approximately a six-month delay, because what we're gonna be doing is MSBA would receive our letter, and they would request at the board meeting in August that Wilmington be placed back into the eligibility period while MSBA staff looks at the 1,500-student option to come up with what the actual enrollment would be, because they come up with those numbers with the district. And at that point, they would put it back to the board for a decision to allow Wilmington to go back to where you started from, the feasibility stage, and that would be in October. So, essentially, it would be a six-month wait while we wait for the MSBA board to come back and say, you're ready to restart. So, this is kind of the detail on what I just explained. You guys and the rest of the boards in the town are reviewing this request right now to see kind of what people think. If it was to move forward by June 27th, we would have to issue a formal request to MSBA, asking them to consider allowing us to look at this new option. The board meeting is in August, which they would move the town back to eligibility while MSBA staff worked with the school district to come up with what that enrollment number actually would be to allow us to proceed to study, just like they came up with the 755 students for, you know, the pre-K to five and the 130 for pre-K K. And then, in November, they would vote to allow you back to get back to the starting point where we're at right now, and then we continue on with our process. So, this is our attempt to try and take this in a graphic format, put it into a flow chart, so we know exactly what we're going to. Right now, those are the three options we're available to study. That's been agreed to with MSBA, so we would be coming back to you with solutions and costs for what these three options would look like. We asked the question, you know, is it possible to explore other options? And we were asking that question really to ourselves and our leadership team, and the answer was, you know, maybe. We should ask MSBA what's involved in that process, which is why we're here right now. And these are the potential responses that could come back. So, the green arrows at the bottom here are all the three options that you have. That yellow arrow is the new option that we're requesting. And potential questions for us all to be considering as we develop this. If we just go with a pre-K K solution for 130 students, right? We take care of that population, but we're gonna have to answer, we feel, the question in the community is, okay, that's great, but what are we doing with the remaining five schools? So, Bowell, Wilburn, Shawshank, North and West, what's the plan? We'd have to figure that out. If we went to the next step and pre-K to three was the next step and an option consolidation, and we said, that's our preferred solution. That goes a little bit farther, and it takes care of two of your six schools, but what's the plan for the remaining four? All right, so these are all, you know, iterative process of going back to the community and say, here's one project, but we do have a plan for the rest, and here's potentially some cost impacts and potential schedule for when that could be. The same for the 755, and with pre-K, the answer we heard is yes, but their reimbursement would only go up to the 755 max. So, we would have to go through that process with them and be able to come back and say, if we were to build this, it would cost X, this would be Wilmington's local share, here would be MSBA's share, and you can compare that against, here's your option of pre-K to five, which is standalone with 755, which is reimbursed by MSBA. We'll have that cost for pre-K to five, so you'll have an idea if you were to try and replicate that in the future, kind of how much that would cost potentially if you were to try and go that on your own. We would also have some recommendations if we were to wait, because we talked a little bit about this at the last meeting, that we're allowed to do one project with MSBA at a time. They complete that, and it's specific to one school population that they've agreed to and the school sites that they've agreed to. So, if we were to look to get into MSBA process at the end of this successful project, how long would that take? We talked a little bit about that, that's somewhere in the 10-plus year range before you could even apply for your statement of interest again to be considered. So, there's some timeframe obviously involved, there's some escalation involved, and it may make sense to just try and get as much of the data as we can to help formulate, you know, what are the options for the community moving forward after this project is done? And that's our update. And we're here to answer any questions that we have as best as we can. And if we don't have answers, and we need more questions to MSBA or other groups, we're certainly happy to go chase down those answers for you, so happy to open it up.
Thank you. Thank you very much. Start out with the board. Questions?
Thank you. Good evening. Thank you very much for being here, and thank you for your presentation. I do have a couple of questions, if I may. You mentioned these conversations that you've had in the last week or so. Those just simply phone calls? Is that something that's been documented in a memo, email, letterhead, something that we could...
Yep, there were simple emails that, over normal course of business through this process, we're checking in with MSBA, bought through the process. And so, these meetings initially were set up as kind of check-ins with them, as how the process is moving. And obviously, they know this question is out there, so it was follow-up. On the phone call we had last time was also included Mary McCetty, who's gonna be the new executive director starting July 1st, so she was part of that.
So, I think based on what we've heard tonight, what we've read in the memo, certainly there's been some new information that's come out, as you've acknowledged here. It's probably a good thing we didn't take a vote on the 31st, now that we know that there was some new information that's developed. Would you agree?
Yeah, I think any current information is always good, and that's why we have these conversations. And again, I would stress that, right, we're trying to get to a point where we're asking MSBA, get to them to answer our questions. So, the staff at MSBA is giving us these questions and information to be able to present with you. Ultimately, it's gonna be their board that makes those recommendations.
You mentioned at the beginning of your presentation, MSBA referenced them as being, there was a question whether there would be a full participant. I wonder if you could just elaborate. Does that mean participant meaning their funding obligation? What did you mean by that?
Their funding obligation, their reimbursement towards the project. Now, right now, they've agreed to look at pre-K to five and fund that at Wilmington's normal reimbursement rate, you know, up to eligible costs. And what they're saying is they would allow you to look at a pre-K five solution as part of their project, but they would only reimburse you for a project that they agreed to before, which was 755.
District-wide. I appreciate you clarifying that. So, if my understanding's correct of the new information that we got last week is that, as you just articulated, they would fund up to a certain percent. So, I won't suggest that anybody in the room or anywhere knows what the percentage might be when the time comes. But we'll just use, I don't know, 30, 40, just round numbers. I'll use that. I won't put, I won't pin that on you to use any number, because we can't predict at this point. But let's just say if it was a round number of 40%, does that mean that, you know, you could look at something that exceeded 755, but they're only gonna fund, now the funding goes down, perhaps it's only 20%? Is that correct?
Correct.
So, let's just say if the number was 30%, could potentially, and these are round numbers, I'm just guessing, ballpark.
Then that affected their reimbursement would be less on a district-wide project than it would be on a focus project that they've agreed to.
So, just so I'm clear, that if we were to adopt or change course here, I'll use, that we could potentially risk reimbursement funding. Is that correct?
No, I believe we'd be going in eyes wide open on the options. And that particular option for a district-wide solution would have the caveat of they're only reimbursing up to the 755 students. That we're not risking our reimbursement on any of the other projects at the full freight reimbursement. It's just for this extra ask for, looking for a district-wide solution.
Just, and forgive me, I just wanna make sure I have this right. So, and let's just say we, for the sake of argument, if we stayed the course, we didn't support this, we move forward with the current three options that we, you know, the residents voted for in March of 2022. We would hopefully get whatever funding was presented. It could be 30, it could be 40, it could be more, it could be less. If we make a change, that number could decrease.
Not for your option, your original options are all gonna be the same, right? So, if you decide the pre-K to five for 755 students is the way, the preferred solution for the community, you're getting the full reimbursement for them for that project. The only difference is to be able to look at a district-wide solution, understanding that the local cost, because you're solving all of your problems, is gonna be higher than it would be because MSBA is not participating in the full project.
Appreciate you walking me through that. You know, I was, I was really kind of open. I certainly learned a lot on the 31st at the meeting, and so I appreciate you coming back and providing this memo. My concern is that is the page, the second page of the memo, it's the second to last paragraph. This is the, this is the part that concerns me, and that, and I don't know, quite frankly, if I'm willing to risk this, is that it reads, however, the MSBA may only fund up to 75, 755, as you just said, as was previously agreed upon, which I take as the March 2022 vote. It goes on to say, we would have to be removed from the town, from the MSBA program, and as you mentioned in the PowerPoint, we would have to resubmit. And for me, from my perspective, I don't know if that's a risk I'm willing to take, quite frankly, given the fact that, you know, you are probably well aware that the town did a facilities master plan that took quite a while, that was published in 2017. We developed these letters in 2018, these statements of interest, they were submitted, I believe, in 2019. And then, of course, we had overwhelming support for the Wildwood project, which we pitched as a community, as a Wildwood project, even though other endeavors were included in the letters. And it was overwhelmingly supported by the majority of the boards, residents from all over the town. And so, right now, I'm hesitant to change course, but, Mr. Chairman, I don't wanna take a ball. If I, I thank you for the...
If I could just, I wanna make sure I'm hearing what you're saying right. To get removed from the program is if you ask for the pre-K through four option. So, I just wanna make sure that that, that that's clear.
I appreciate that.
Pre-K five would be to go back into eligibility and have that six-month extension, basically.
So, pre-K four would require you to do that. We're not asking for that.
Correct.
At this point, and the other thing that would require you to go back is if you said, we're not interested in pre-K four, but we would be interested, what would it take to get MSB to participate in the full district-wide solution? Because right now, they said that they're only gonna do a partial up to 755. That's where they said, if you want us to consider full reimbursement on your full district-wide problem, that's when we would have to pull you out of the current path that you're on right now and start over.
Yeah, and that concerns me. I think, you know, some great points were made at that meeting. Of, you know, in the big scheme of a 20, 30-year or more project, what's six months, you know? And that certainly resonated with me, but certainly, I'm aware of the risk, and I keep going back to the... Things have changed so much, and I get that that's gonna happen as you go along through the process, and we hire worthy individuals like yourself who come in and give us your expertise, that we're gonna find new information. My concern is that, you know, on the 31st, we were all kind of charged with coming back and making a decision. Since that time, it's changed, so I guess, Mr. Chairman, if you'll allow me one more question, it would be, do you expect any other conversations to take place this week, that we would learn anything new?
No, we don't.
Thank you all for this presentation, for being here again. I too, as you know, I was really on the fence and not leaning towards this. And then I, you know, went through, considered, you know, all the conversations, people's opinions and things like that. And I was actually at a point where I was like, you know what? What could it hurt? But then, when I was reading through all of this and hearing, basically, and I think it's wonderful. I'm so thankful that you had those conversations with the MSBA, because it answered a lot of the questions and things I was questioning last time, and those have been answered and removed. So, I'm very thankful we did not take a vote, because it would have been a mistake, clearly. But I, I still am not going to support this, because now that it's been narrowed down so much, I just don't see the point to push it off six months for something that isn't, were to be accepted. It's not even gonna, and I understand why, I understand all that. That's not gonna be fully covered. It's gonna be, you know, a larger cost to the town, and we haven't even begun to think about where could we put this school? Like, I think we're really putting the cart before the horse. I think we should stay the course and just see this through, because it's just gonna put things behind, and, you know, people could say six months, whatever. I respect people's opinions. But I think the conversations that you've brought forth, that you guys have had in the interim, and the way you're presenting it with all the changes, I think that speaks volumes. And like I said, I really appreciate it, because it helped to make my decision that I will not support this. But I appreciate you coming in. It really is helpful. I mean that.
Yeah.
Thank you.
If I may, one of the things that we've talked about as a leadership team is that going before town vote, we wanna make sure that we have thought of every option, given you every choice, so that when we go before town vote and residents come up and ask these questions, have you thought of this? Have you thought of that? Did you explore this? We just wanna make sure that we've given you everything that we know to help you move forward. So, if this pre-K to five district-wide option is not something that you're interested in as a community, we have no issue with that at all. We just wanna make sure that when the residents get up to the microphone at town vote and they ask all of the questions, we wanna make sure we have all the answers, and we all wanna be able to say, we looked at that, we explored that. You know, we realize there's, there's not maybe a piece of land that could house this, but we did our due diligence, and we talked with all of your boards to make sure that everyone was on the same page. So, that's, you know, and, and meeting with the MSBA again, I think, helped us kind of define that even more, so.
And I just, I'll just add, no, that's right, and I appreciate you guys doing your due diligence. And, and I think, you know, speaking of going before town, I'm gonna go back to what my colleague, Mr. Bendel, said. This did go before town and was voted on and to move forward. So, honestly, to come back against what the residents, you know, already voted on and to have to go through the process again, and like I said, it's more so for me about this whole encompassing district, district thing. I am not against that. I'm really not. I think, you know, we have far too many schools. We need to figure something out. I just don't think that this is the time and the place for it. I think we need to, you know, I would have loved to see maybe something, bring in Wildwood and Bowell together as an option. You know, that probably would have been a good, you know, solution in that way, if we could have done that. But, but right now, I just think we're gonna just kind of open a wormhole here. You know, we don't have the, today, we do not have the infrastructure to support that model. And if it were to go through, I don't know what we're gonna do. I mean, we're looking 20 years down the line, in my view, you know. my view, you know what I mean, if it were to go through and, and that, like, I just don't see it being feasible today. And again, this is just my opinion. I appreciate the work and the options. I agree with you. We got to put all the options out there. The town, you know, should get the, the chance to vote on, on it. That's why we have town meeting and the structure we do, you know, so. But yeah, no, I'm all for that. That's why we're here. So thank you.
Thank you. Frank?
One question that I have is that we got in the six-month delay, does that come with a cost?
No.
Okay, so there's no cost, there's no cost with, if we have a delay and we still stay the course? In other words, if, if we decide, you know, we vote, we were to vote for this, or the combined town votes for this, and then, you know, you go back to MSBA, and let's say they deny you, or it's not favorable to what we're looking for, and we go ahead with the Wildwood, and the Wildwood gets pushed out six months, there's no additional cost, other than the fact we lose six months, there's no additional cost involved in the six months we've lost?
The only thing that'd be considered out there, right, is time is money and construction escalation, right? If you get beyond six months a year, right, you're going to have to start looking at that.
Yep.
But outside of what you've approved for appropriations to conduct this study, there's no changes to any of that?
And just so everybody's on the same page, the approved project for the Wildwood is mainly for the Wildwood, but can you just run me through a quick and dirty, what is the today's approved project based on that town meeting vote from last year?
There's three options for us to consider. One of them being the replacement in kind of Wildwood, so it's pre-K K for 130 kids. The next option they would let us, that we are going to be studying, would be pre-K to three. Put them up here on the screen. 510 students. And then there's pre-K to five, which is 755 students.
Okay. Okay. And is there any thought into, instead of consolidating into a, for lack of a better term, a super school, for lack of a better term, is there thought to putting additions, renovations on the current buildings, or any of the current buildings that might be able to hold more than what's, what's in there today? And give us the technology, because I get it, that right now, we have buildings that are built 1960s, 70s, et cetera. So I understand that, just, you know, just like this building, this building was built as a school back in the 50s. So I get it, that building a new school, we're building that new infrastructure, you know, being more cable-ready, you know, technology-ready, I guess, is the thing. But I'm wondering, you know, what does a renovation slash addition do on any of these buildings?
That is part of our process with MSBA. For each one of these options, we're going to have to look at renovations only, renovations and addition, and new construction. We're not automatically going to new construction. We're going to analyze all of those and come back with pros and cons on their educational fit and on their cost, and make the best decision with you guys to move forward.
Thank you.
To, to be fair, Mr. West, I think the schools are in good shape. You know, kudos to the, to the building department for overseeing window replacements and roof replacements. I think management has done a good job in keeping our schools in good shape. You mentioned about to give everybody the options, you know, and want to do that. And I'm, I get you, I'm all for that. But we've been going through these options ad nauseam since 2017, when we had the facilities master plan, and these options were talked about and given out. And at that time, as I recall, this was a non-starter, as I said before. So are you looking at other options on that facilities master plan? Because I have a, I have an option to give you. How about a brand-new school that houses K to eight at the north, right? And then we do a, a campus-type, so that's seven years. And then we do a campus-type school setting, K through eight, with the west and the middle school, since the middle school's being renovated now. So we renovate those after seven years, so that they're brand-new. And the Boewell becomes your pre-K. I mean, that's, can we throw out any options at this point to get to MSBA?
So if we throw out any additional options, they will ask us to remove ourselves from the process altogether and put in a new statement of interest.
Okay.
So the three schools that we can study currently, based on your statement of interest, are the Wildwood, the Woburn Street, and the North Intermediate. So any other schools that we wanted to look at aren't in play at the moment. But with your suggestion, if that was something that people were interested in doing, as Lee had mentioned earlier, anything other than those three schools, we would need to remove ourselves from the program and then try and get back in at a later time.
And that's, goes with the pre-K to four option, you have to remove. But they're saying not the pre-K to five. And to Mr. Bendel's point, and I understand, Mr. Dorr, Mr. Dorr, that we get reimbursed regardless, right, but it's the percentage. So you're talking at 30% with this current option, but if you're going to go with the district-wide, you know, instead of it being 80 million, just throwing numbers, don't, it goes to 240 million, the percentage is, is crazy low. That, right, yeah.
If I, if I could, I'll just give you some context of other communities that are facing similar problems, where they've got many buildings, and they're trying to look, you know, do we try and do this in one step, or do we try and do this in multiple steps? And how much can our community afford, right? That's a really big question.
Yeah.
And the reason that we're asking for this option isn't so much that we think that that's the ultimate solution, but we do recognize the fact that you guys are thinking about the rest of your buildings, you know, in the future. So this conversation we had with MSB was interesting to me, for them to open up the possibility of, we'll let you explore a district-wide solution, right, and we'll let it be a part of our project that'll move forward. We're going to limit our reimbursement. But is there economy of scale and cost effectiveness for the town to do it at that point with them, even with a net reimbursement that's less, versus, in another community, is there thinking, well, if we have to do this project with an MSBA now, we may have to do this to work on our other stuff, and we can't wait 10, 15 years for it, we may have to do that on our own dime. And that's where I guess I'm looking for, to give you guys options to understand, if you were to go down that road, what is that financial picture look like if you're doing a project and you're getting some watered-down net reimbursement, which is less than that project, versus standalone that you have to do on your now? And then you can start playing with the numbers at that point and say, okay, we can't afford to do it now. But at least we know what it is, right? We know how much that costs. And you can extrapolate out in the future, depending on what the plan is for the community. So we're really just looking to give you a data point that's blessed with MSBA and part of their process, for you guys to be able to have, to take into consideration. Not that it has to be your ultimate solution, and there's no penalty for it. And they've said, yeah, we're willing to let you explore that.
The staff, not the board.
Right, and, and...
You emphasize that a number of times, that you've talked to the staff by email and so, but is the ultimate, is the board's decision?
Right.
Another unknown, right? And that's what bothers me, all of these unknowns, because right now, we're in the pipeline. I mean, you know, we heard loud and clear from the teachers and the parents at the Wildwood School, that something needs to be done with the Wildwood School. Loud and clear. And that's what we started in 2018, as Mr. Bendel had mentioned. So I, I think we stay the course. You have three good options here. If you want to consolidate, you're consolidating either with the Woburn Street or the Woburn Street in the north. I just, you know, I, who, who came up with adding this extra option, by the way? Just curious. I asked that question on the 31st, and I never got an answer. Whose idea was it to throw this into the mix?
I think honestly, the conversation started when we were doing the interim study, where to put Wildwood kids, right? And our charge was, go turn over every rock and stone to find space to try and house those students together.
Which was done in the facilities master plan. Did you have an opportunity to look at that?
I've seen that, yes.
So, did you have an opportunity?
Yes.
Okay, so all of that was in there. So who in the, in the group of whatever it was, said, hey, how about this? I'm just curious. Was it, was it you?
I, I certainly raised the question.
Was it Mr. Brand, or was it Mr. Hull, or was it? I'm just curious.
I think as a, as a leadership team, I think the conversation just evolved as we were going along. I can't say that it was one person specifically, but I think collectively as a group, as we've all, you know, Doran Whittier has, have been to all of your schools, we know what we do on other projects. And we know from talking with Dr. Brand and Mr. Hull, you know, the, the understanding of what the community would, would maybe need. So it's, I think that what sometimes gets muddied in the waters is that we're only asking to study this. We're not asking to implement it as in, okay, we've decided, you know, everyone behind the scenes is whispering and saying, okay, we're going to go with the 1,500-student school.
Yeah, I, well, someone brought it up, that means it's, it's a legitimate suggestion. I, I know, you, you mentioned that, you know, Doran Whittier knows the schools, and they certainly know the high school, because they, they did the, I think, the gymnasium floor project, and it cost the town over 100,000, that they didn't do it correctly. But anyways, we'll let that go. But so, but I'm, I'm in favor of the current options, along with my other colleagues. I haven't, I don't know about Mr. DePalma, but, so.
Mr. Chair, if I could just note, in terms of the discussion, there were a number of discussions that took place over, I don't know, the last month or so, maybe longer at this point. But, you know, I think when we were looking at the enrollments again, you know, one of the things that came up during that discussion was, and this was said previously, but looking at the high school and the middle school, both those schools have far less students in them than they were designed for. And I know specifically, the finance committee for several years now has asked questions about, you know, the enrollment and the access space. And quite frankly, one of my concerns was going to town meeting with whatever approach ultimately is, is deemed appropriate, and having somebody ask the question, well, did the town look at options of moving the fifth to the middle and the eighth to the high school, or other options that ultimately kind of led to why we were looking at some additional options? I don't think there was, I think the intent, as was previously noted, was trying to be, do as much due diligence as we could, so that when we're confronted with questions, we have answers. You know, obviously, we don't want to get into a mode where we're examining options that are simply not viable. But I think the options that were identified had some viability, whether or not they are the final solution or not, you know, remains to be seen. But at least having the ability to explore the options. So in the case of what's on the table now, the prospect of adding a pre-K to fifth grade district-wide, all it is, is an option. And we're, we're not saying, I certainly haven't endorsed that option as the option, and I don't think any of the folks that have been involved in, in these discussions have endorsed that option. But I do think whatever approach is taken here sets the stage for what is going to happen, or have to happen, over the next many years. So if it's a, a pre-K to K, if that's the ultimate solution, then we're still going to have to address grades one to five in, in some manner, town-wide. So what, what that is, remains to be seen. The decisions today will set, to some measure, I think, the model of how we proceed going forward. And part of the challenge is obviously, and I guess one of the things that is somewhat interesting about the pre-K to five district-wide, is understanding that MSBA on a net basis would give the town less in reimbursement. If that was done in, in the next seven years, what would that cost the taxpayers versus doing, for example, a pre-K to five that addressed a portion of the town, and then having to do a pre-K to five in 10 or 15 or 18 years? You know, obviously, at 5% or 6% escalation, or whatever the escalation factor is for those 10 or 15 or 18 years, that building that might cost 150 million today is perhaps going to cost 100, 280 million, you know, 15 or 18 years from now. So being able to have some level of information about that, I think, has some value.
Mr. Chair, if I may.
Go ahead.
Have we, with the enrollment declining over how many years it's been, have either, have we done any data research on why? Like, is it just, you know, less children in town of that age group? Are children going out of, out of town, you know, for any of the grades? Like, do we have those data points to say, yes, this is why enrollment's down? Because I got to believe that enrollment is down for whatever the reasons may be. It's going to go up at some point. It might be 10 years from now, but, but it's going to, so we, we obviously have to have capacity to build a new building that, you know, will be around for decades to come to accommodate growth, you know? So I mean, it, it's one of those things, it's like, okay, we have declined, but it's probably going to go up at some point. So I mean, are we supposed to shrink schools, and then, oh, we need more room? Are we supposed to grow? I mean, I think we need to collect that information, if it has not been done first, before we jump into this, to see if these are viable options. Because all's we're doing in my eyes right now is wasting time, six months, whatever it may be, when we could just keep moving forward on this. I, I think it's unfair to this project and to the people who voted for it, to put it on the back burner while we explore other options for, for data and to see what we could do, when this is what we had set out to do, it's what the people voted on. I think this has to be done separately. I don't think this is the place for it. I think this project is being used for future data points. Yeah, okay, it's not going to cost us anything monetarily upfront, we're not going to lose any money. The only thing we lose is time, right? I get that. But I think that is important, too, because it does put the project back. It's been pretty clear, and this is my intake, that it looks like that isn't, we're not really going for that for a possibility, but just more to see if it's a viable possibility for us at some point. Okay? So it's almost like, okay, we can get this information for free, let's do that. Not a bad thing, but I don't think it's, this is the time for it. And to Mr. Hull's point, which I understand, something that might cost $100,000 now may cost, you know, $250,000 in, in eight years. But our MSBA, whatever the percentage, just making up a number, you know, if they say, okay, we're going to give you, you know, 50 grand today, but in eight years, because of costs and living inflation, it could be 20 grand. So I mean, I think that's a very fluid thing, because I think as, as costs go up, most likely, our, our portion of what we're going to get is going to go down. So I mean, it's, it's kind of a yin-yang thing. So that, that's how I, again, it's, it's just personal point.
Dr. Brand?
Mr. Chair, thank you. Good evening, everyone. Just a couple of things to try and respond to, try my best to remember all of the discussion, because it's been a rich one. I think, first, Ms. Misselli, to your question around the enrollment and the study of that, absolutely, we have continued to try and gather what we can in terms of data for those families that may be choosing to pursue schooling outside of Wilmington. But what we know is fact, that our overall aggregate of enrollment across the entire district, and more largely across the entire region, has continued to decline. That, that is fact.
Yeah.
And, and it would be very easy for anyone who might call that into question, to be able to find those numbers that are tracked regionally. But I think back to, Mr. Kyra, your point, or your question rather, earlier around, sort of, whose idea was it? I want to respond, just if I may, to that, because I think that this is an important piece, and I'll echo a little bit about what Mr. Hull said. You know, you have to think about this, this in reality, or in, not in reality, in the sense of what we have here, and that is, just recently, our community has hired these folks, to my right, to join us collectively as a community to explore this project. And as has Mr. Hull has mentioned, there clearly have been rumblings, I'm not sure what a, a better word to, to put, to the question of, well, with our declining enrollment, should we, have we, will we explore the eighth-grade moving to the high school? It, it, you know, I, I can't tell you it's every conversation or every other conversation, but it has, it has loomed out there. And what we recognized and... And what we recognized and brought to the surface of our conversations quickly as these folks to my right joined us is to say, look, we have this. It's sitting out there. Now would seem to be the time if we're going to pursue exploring it. And very quickly, they acknowledged that, yes, this would be the time. And, you know, this is setting the stage for the future of schooling in, in our community. If we don't do it now, and if there's not a will to do so, that's absolutely fine. And as has been mentioned here, we will be able to continue on our path forward with exploring, studying the three options that you as a board and the school committee and the MSBA collectively agreed to. And that's absolutely fine. We, we know we have need there. But I think it's important just to point out that it is about setting the stage. And if we don't, if there's not a will or not an interest to pursue the exploration of eighth grade, then that is absolutely fine. It's not something that I, I, I've not explored, I've not given it a lot of thought to, if you were to ask me directly. I don't even know if it can work in terms of that facility. But if we don't explore it now, then we move past this point in time. And I really think it's a time in which we're not likely to be able to return. And that's okay. If that's the will of the community to study what has been identified through the facilities' master plan and what has been agreed to, we, we can, we can certainly move forward and not lose any time. But it seemed to be an important time, and thus we raised it with these folks here.
Thank you, Dr. Brand. I sit here, and the other night when we had our meeting over at the high school, I see the address of one central elementary school. My first thought was, I was gonna have to go to our town manager and say, what streets are you gonna intermittent domain to make this right? We don't have land, we don't have land for it. Simple as that. There's, I've tried putting a seed in the ground, but it doesn't grow any more land. We don't have it. And I'd hate to see us put a school up on Salem Street, using it for an example, because it's town-owned property. I, and I also heard someone say Shrappe's, which we don't even own yet. But you have to transport all these children to this school? And you're gonna have an elementary, a, a child on a bus for 45 minutes, maybe an hour? And if it's inclement weather or there's road construction, even longer? I think that, excuse my phrase, it's a fool's game. I could never support anything like that, and I wouldn't. I am looking at it that we should continue on with our pre-K five, six, eight, and nine to 12. I believe that what we should seriously look into is, is the new building, is a new building, bless you. But also, the renovation of one or two of our schools in the area that we can with MSB, MSBA, MSBA. Now, from what I, the way I understood it the other night, and from what I've been reading, you're using the 755 students. They will track them, is that correct? What schools they go to? And that's where they'll look at helping the town with investments of rehabbing or additions. Is that basically the way it's gonna go?
Correct. For the, for the three schools, specific schools identified at 755 students, yes.
I have, I'd be a stronger supporter if we were going to go with the new school and seriously concentrate on an addition or two that we have to, we would have to do and get that side of town done. Then at a later date, we're gonna have to address the other side of town, no doubt about it. But to, but to even consider a 1,200 student school in, in this town is, in my opinion, foolishness. Basically, well, for two reasons, but the main reason is we don't have the land. And I would never support the town saying that we're gonna take this street and this street and intermittent domain it, because that's where we would have to put the school to make it convenient for everyone in town. I just, I, I think it's too big of a school. I think the children would lose more than they would gain by being too large. It gets to a point, no matter how young or how old you are, when things become too large, you get lost. And I came from a school system, my graduating class was 1,132. And you don't think kids got lost in that school? I could never, I could never support, I could support, you're looking at grade, pre-K to five, six to eight, and nine to 12. I thank you. I also have to look at the cost of things too. You're getting into the realm of, oh my God, money. I don't know where we're gonna, we would get that kind of money to do as elaborate a job in a short period of time that we're looking at. I, I, I look at the new school and addition or two. I think it would be more, the town would be more receptive to it, and I think it would be something that they would love to see here going right away, not tomorrow, today. But I could not support any of these other programs that you're recommending.
Mr. Chair, I'd like to make a motion to take up the board to consider, number 10.
Excuse me one second, please, before we do.
Yep.
I have had contact, contact with our legal counsel, so everyone knows, to discuss a vote on this. He has advised me that we do not have to vote on it because we are not a voting body of the group that is working on these, on the schools. And that is school department, the building depart, the building committee, Superintendent Brand, town manager, Hull, they're the groups. I wanted to bring that out now before we voted so that all my colleagues understood where I was coming from with these things. But if we'd like to bring a motion forward.
Mr. Chair, just to, to clarify, so to, to that point, I, I fully understand that the select board is not one of the parties that would have to sign off on this letter. But the intent of having these discussions with the finance committee, with the select board, with the school committee and with the Wildwood Building Committee, one of the things that MSBA has consistently said from day one is that they want to make sure that we are able to the fullest extent possible to present a unified front, because they're, understandably, they're putting up a lot of money, even in the early stages, investing in the town on a project. And the last thing they want to have happen is to spend some amount of money in, in terms of reimbursements to a community, only to have the project fail at the end. And certainly, there's no guarantees on a project regardless of how it appears. But the purpose for me in suggesting that a vote be taken from the committees that are not directly sign-offs is to serve as a gauge. Clearly, in my estimation, if one or more of these four committees, who are some of the major decision-makers in the town, are not in support of a, of an option to look at a K to five, a pre-K to five district-wide, then that certainly is an indicator that, you know, one key element of the town or board is, is not in favor of it. And I think it would be, you know, probably perilous for us to try to go down that road when we have one or more boards that are not in favor of this approach. So I understand what Chair DePalmer noted, and it's, it is true that there's no legal obligation, but I, I think it's important as a, as a gauge as to, to see where these four committees stand. And so if, if more than one, if one or more community committees does not favor this, then I, I think it's probably ill-advised to go forward and better advised to stick with the game plan.
Chairman, to that point, you know, with due respect to our colleagues on the finance committee and the school committee, you know, if this board were just to shoot this down tonight, they don't even get a chance to speak their piece. So, you know, one thing that stood out to me in the timeline is that we have to make the decision by the 27th, we meet on the 26th. So I just wanted to offer that as a.
I won't be at that meeting as long as I can vote absentee or something, because I want my vote made. I'm fine with waiting.
I made that statement not to say that we can't, we will not vote on it, but I wanted to make sure that everyone understood that we are, we're all in favor of what we're talking about here, the three pro, the three different stereotypes, the three types. But I wanted to make sure that everyone understood that our vote is a vote of confidence, but it's not a vote of authority. And that's all I wanted to make sure on everyone. Now, before we vote, is.
You're suggesting to take no action?
Oh, no.
I, I would like to vote tonight if I have to say.
I would vote.
Yeah, I don't have a problem voting tonight. It doesn't.
It doesn't change anything.
The finance committee for meeting and the school committee and the, and the.
They can still have their vote.
To, to the committee, to thank you, Mr. Brand, to meet and to, to vet out their concerns and issues and.
Before we vote, or is there anyone else from the audience that wants to speak?
I'm Jay Burns, nine Pinewood Road. I do wanna make note that back in February 8th of 2017, the school committee had a formal vote on a consolidation plan, which is not encompassed in this, which I think should be. It probably doesn't fall under MSBA guidelines, but in my opinion, as of this day and what I've heard thus far, and I look forward to hearing the discussion on Wednesday, that it's still a very viable consolid, consolidation plan that interim Superintendent Benton created. It was, it was created as a six plan, which I think is viable. It didn't talk about new builds, but it did talk about the addition of consolidation with equality for both sides of town in conjunction. It was, if I recall correctly, it was gonna be a town-funded plan because of the MSBA and the high school. So, but what it pertained to is that it was creating pre-K through second grade with the addition, I believe, on the North Street to accommodate that. Third grade through fifth at the North and Shawshank, I believe Shawshank was gonna get an addition. And then you'll have the six to eight middle school and then the nine to 12 high school. I still think it's a viable plan. I still, what I would love to see is, I'm for feasibility study. I would like this, whether we have to fund it, I think it's a good money spent, because I know six years, the, the facilities' master plan is only six years old. And that vote is only six years old. And I still stand by that vote today, and I think I'm the only, next to Mr. Rogero, the only original members who are part of that discussion in that process, especially with the building of the new high school. I do worry because, and I, and I don't wanna get too far ahead, because I think we do need to, we're talking about every option and every exploration, and I think this is an exploration that we should make, whether or not it could be MSBA-funded or town-funded as it was originally developed as, because we, we knew we weren't gonna get it, funding through MSBA for, for several years after the high school went up. I do think that what this also does, it, it provides equity to both sides of town, so not one side of town has to wait 10 years to minimize a transition. It would be least impactful that we could operate under our current schools until those additions and our renovations are done, so that would be a minimal impact. The other aspect is with busing and, and then our road infrastructures with the development currently going on. Right now, I think that's the only change that I've seen within our community that would be, that would raise questions right now, because I think our infrastructure, traffic and our, and the, the size of our roadways, which I know is something the board, it comes up from time to time, is something to consider in looking at the viability of some of these proposals. Because it still remains as a formal vote before the, of the school committee, I think this proposal, regardless if we have to do it separately, but I think we should include it in any feasibility study that we, we do. Thank you.
Mr. Chair, to Mrs. Burns' information about this option to the, to the experts here. So I, I brought up an option just recently, and you said we'd have to get kicked out. Now, Mrs. Burns just brought up another option. So would that be the same thing? Could we put that forward, or would that kick us out?
So I, I think from listening to Ms. Burns, I believe she was saying that those options were town-funded, is what originally was discussed.
Yes.
But to answer your question, yes, if she, if, if you would like to look at an option of pre-K to two, I believe she said, three to five, six to eight, nine to 12, that does not fall within the parameters that we have, which are pre-K K, pre-K three, pre-K five, with the Wildwood, Wuburn, and North Intermediate. Those are the three schools that we can look at. And, and we, the district-wide option was what we had asked, which would have included to look at all of the schools. But with what we have in our statement of interest to the MSBA, we can only look at those three schools and those three grade enrollments.
Yeah, and again, I would wanna go through the MSBA anyways for reimbursement, but I just wanted to.
Yeah.
To make a, make it clear that unfortunately, what Ms. Benton had proposed, we wouldn't be able to go through the MSBA.
Point of personal preference, Mr. DePalma. My name is referenced in this conversation. So you're right, but it's still a formal vote of a consolidation plan off of a town-paid facilities' master plan. Secondly, I am not in the habit of throwing good money after bat. If we have, this is the time to look at consolidation of our schools, or we will never get there in a way that would benefit our students, their learning, and our families within this community. You talk about enrollments, how we, how and where we put our schools in this community will impact enrollment. Because if it takes, as Mr. DePalma says, and this is hypothetical at this juncture since we're in that stage, if it takes a student 45 minutes, and by law, they can't be on the bus for longer than 60 minutes, and in a town of our size, that you could go from one side to the other in what, 15, 20? We could lose children to other private schools for, because they'll have, they'll be getting home quicker, they're able to do extracurricular activities, they'll be able to do homework. It comes down to quality of life and investment in this municipality, not just for now, but when the buildings were reassessed. Each of our school buildings were reassessed in that, as facilities' master plan, they had strong bones that we were told at that time could last us another 20, 30 years, possibly with these additions and renovations to bring them up to code because of the age. So I do think that if we do have to put it out and, and take into consideration, we don't know exactly what MSBA's contribution will be. If it makes our community and our educational system more efficient and accessible for the students and families of our municipality, it's an investment worth, worth investing in, even if MSBA is not a part of it. Because there's, the last thing I would want is a school, because MSBA is throwing money, that we're still putting out millions and millions of dollars as taxpayers. I would rather my millions and millions of dollars, my small contribution, I should say, go towards something that I know will only strengthen the education and the quality of life and learning within this community. And I would rather do it now, because now is, now is the time. This has been on the table for consolidation since I got on in 2012. So this isn't a new conversation. We were able to do that facilities' master plan, which was a blessing. And I think that is a segue to where we are now and a feasibility study. But I do, regardless of MSBA would accept it or not, because I would like to see the cost breakdown of what that could appear for the impact on our community compared to, it may be, it may be the same cost that the residents of this community may need to finance, you know? I would be interested in that, because if it's not, no longer a viable solution, then so be it. But the thing is, is I think it's, it's the most effective and efficient way for both sides of town and equality for all of our students, equality, equity on both sides of town. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else? The lady way back.
Go on with the mic.
Thank you for taking comments before you voted. It sounds like.
Please state your name and your address, please.
Jennifer Benelli, 17 Jacobs Street. I do appreciate you taking comments. I hope that the comments from the, the public who showed up tonight and who have, showed up to every Wildwood Building Committee does carry some weight, even though it kinda sounds like everyone's already made up their minds. I would, I would, I'm, I'm, I do research to help drive strategy. I have a great respect for a strategic plan, but a strategic plan needs to evolve. And six years actually is a long time. Every, every, you know, you should be never, not scrapping it, it is very important to look at it. It's very important to understand why decisions were made, they were, the way they were. But there are new factors that have arisen over the last six years, and so we should be thinking about how does that, that plan evolve? How do we take the learning? How do we take the learnings from that and evolve it to the current mindset? And from my perspective, you know, if we do not move forward with learning through this MSA project, how are we going to fund adequate buildings, I shouldn't say adequate, appropriate buildings for education? Because it's not just a matter of whether boiler works, it's a matter of whether it's providing quality educations to our students. If we do not get that plan together through, through this group and them doing that work and working with Mr. Hall to do so, then I would like to see the town figure out, how are you funding the, whatever projects are not solved by this project? We should know when we go to vote, what that, what's our plan for the next, the other side of town, for the other five elementary, you know, I guess, three, four or five elementary schools that we need to fund. The citizens of this town showed up for the Wildwood Building Committee meeting on March 8th because they were appalled that we had let our buildings get in that condition. And yes, it was about Wildwood, but it was about our school buildings and doing what's right for them. They also showed up at the town hall meeting and the meetings prior to that, saying, why are we voting for a new town hall? By the way, the same age as Beltwell, or maybe Beltwell's a little older, without a plan for our schools. So if we don't have a plan on how we're going to fund it and we're not going to get it through this method, we need to be working on that simultaneously over the next year and a half. Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Humble opinion is that, to Mr. Bendel's point, is that we do have an opportunity, and again, with respect to select woman, select board member, Sally here, I, I would like to hear what the school vote is, and I would like to hear what the Finance Committee vote is. And the reason why I say that is, is that I think, you know, again, I have my own personal opinion, but I'd like to hear the vote, you know, the formal vote of the other committees, because it's actually the School Committee that's going to be spearheading whatever project goes forward, not this board. It's going to be the Finance Committee that's going to make a recommendation as to, do they support their plan with the potential of, you know, hundreds of million, potentially, you know, millions of dollars, I'll just say, of future funding. So I mean, I, you know, I'm, I'm leaning to support the study, but honestly, I'm, I don't know that I would support the end project. I've, you know, to Mr. Palmer's point, De Palmer's point, excuse me, about building a soup, you know, like a, one super school, for example, I just feel that, you know, to his point is, is that it's too big for the infrastructure, for the traffic we have. And I don't think that we would, we'd be able to get the kids to and from in an accessible way. And then when we say, you know, well, we're going to consolidate and possibly sell off the, a school, we're in process over the past several years of buying land, you know, like we're in process of potentially buying the, through a town meeting vote, the Sharapa Farm. So now we're going to say, well, we're buying the Sharapa Farm, but now we want to decommission X school and potentially leave that land to some development. I mean, I doubt very much that a developer is going to buy that building if we were to sell it publicly. I think that they would be looking to buy the land, and you're probably looking at another 200, 300 condos or something there that's only going to future screw up that infrastructure in that, in that part of town. So I think, you know, like I said, is that I, if it was me, and again, I say-
I'd like to jump in here. We're all here tonight. I'm not going to be here at the next meeting, which I let the town manager and the chair know last week. It's unfair to me that I don't get to speak my vote. And frankly, I have the information tonight to make my vote, and if hearing from other boards is going to sway your vote one way or the other, that's fine, but it shouldn't. That's the way I feel about it. I would like to take the vote tonight, or I'm going to have a huge issue with not being able to vote on this.
I've already stated to-
With all due respect, I don't know.
Mr. Kyra has a, a motion on the floor, if I'm not mistaken? Or did you start it to a stop?
I had put a motion out to take up the board to consider.
Will?
I would like to get them, this meeting, unless there are more things, but I'd like to get this, that gentleman had a comment.
Yeah. John, yes, sir. Can you state your name and your address, please?
Scott Neville, 215 Chestnut Street. I appreciate what Mr. West just said. I am interested in knowing what this project would bring. I am not sure I want a school of that size, but the vote tonight is to get information. That's, that's what we're trying to do here. As, you know, Mr. Hall mentioned earlier, we're going to do our due diligence here, you know, that's what we're trying to do. We're not, we, I don't know where the site is that this school could fit. That's what this study is, would do. It would, it would find if there is a viable site. If there's not, then that's fine, then we can move on. If we, if the study does find a site, the town will have a vote later on in the process if that's the option they want. We're not walking into anything here, we're just opening up more options. As for pushing back, you know, losing six months in this process, I believe it was discussed before that the next step in this process requires some community involvement, and we're pausing that until late September anyway. So we're not, you know, we are going to lose some time, but it could be three months. For a project that's going to last hopefully 50-plus years, that's not a big ask to move back from.
Just, if I'm not mistaken, wasn't that six month? A ballpark, it could go higher, it could go lower, or am I-
The process has been outlined to us, if they take that vote in October at their board meeting, it's a six-month-
Oh, okay. Thank you. Go ahead, I'm sorry.
At the, the May 31st meeting, I was concerned to hear comments that the school was in great shape, and you know, we've heard that they're in good shape tonight. Just a couple of things that I want to make sure the community is aware of with all of our schools. You know, we're currently housing displaced students at three different schools. They'll be moving to two next year, but we are housing displaced students. The boilers at the Wuburn Street are 60 years old. The windows at the west are 59 years old. The Wilmington Education Fund and the school packs fundraise and provide grant money for the schools to help improve them. We're building a new town hall and school admin building, in part because this building that we're in right now was deemed inadequate to conduct town business. The sister building to this facility hosts our youngest learners, and there's no current plan to improve or move those students out of that building. The MSBA standard for how big schools should be for the number of students that are in them, I defer to the school department on this, but I believe the Beltwell is currently undersized for the number of students. The Shawshin is undersized. The Wuburn Street is undersized. There are classrooms at the Shawshin and I believe the Wuburn Street that get little sunlight in them during the daytime. The facilities master plan, which was completed six years ago, has a category under facility quality in existing schools in good condition on a scale from zero to 10, zero being poor and 10 being good. The Beltwell was rated one. The Wildwood was rated one. Shawshin was rated six. Wuburn Street, four. North Intermediate, five. And Western Intermediate, three. Now, none of this is meant to disparage our Public Works Department, who I think do a great job keeping these buildings running. They do the best they can with aging and outdated facilities. The schools are not in great shape. My point with all of this is that there's a lot of construction that's going to be upcoming in Wilmington. We'll, we need to bring our public buildings up to the standards that we should expect from them. It's going to be expensive. That's, that's the reality of the situation here. We need information to make the correct decision on these decisions. No matter what our option is that we choose to take here moving forward, if we're going to go with our three, or if we're going to take, you know, this new choice into consideration, I would strongly, strongly urge the town to put together and publicize an alternative long-term plan for the west-side schools. This is the west, the Shawshin, and the Beltwell. If the north side is going to consolidate to a pre-K to five school, there will be additional construction projects for the west Shawshin and Beltwell that will be needed. What do we anticipate the cost for those projects to be? What is the timeline that the town is looking forward to do these projects? Only with that information can we make an informed decision when the MSBA vote comes up as to what's best for the town. Thank you.
Anyone else?
Hi, I'm Barb Bowden from One Leonard Lane, and I just, I'm not really, I just wanted to list a bunch of questions that I wrote down here based on the conversation tonight. How do you, the Select Board, solicit feedback from your constituents to help inform your decision-making? I've heard a lot of personal opinions with very little information, and what's being asked here tonight is to get more information for decision-making, and it sounds like people are really rested in very personal decisions about what-
I take offense to that. My opinion is personal, but it's- I'm just going to read off my questions and then I'll, I'll let you- No, I'm going to speak or I'm going to leave, okay? Because I'm getting really frustrated.
Let her finish what she wants to say first.
I've heard multiple folks say that they had personal opinions here, but what we're asking for is information to inform.
I don't like being misspoken, that really upsets me.
How, how can you say-
I have made my decision based on facts, and I've said it's my personal opinion, meaning as a town select person, not as me, okay? Go ahead.
Is it okay if I can continue? And, and just, if you can hear my, I just have a bunch of questions, and I don't actually expect an answer, I'm just, like this-
Well, you can't put people down and not expect a rebuttal, okay?
I was asking, the question was, how do you solicit feedback from constituents to help inform your decision-making? The second question is, how do you say our buildings are in good shape? As board responsible for approving facilities master plan and overseeing the town manager and facilities, what is your plan for making sure additional buildings won't fail in the next 15 years and will need to spend additional money in order to sort of save them or try to restore them like we were talking about with Wildwood? Why is there, why are we talking about only replacing Wildwood? That would limit MSBA reimbursement to something relative to 130 students versus 755 students leaving money on the table. Why is there such a lack of partnership and trust across the boards in town? And at this point in the game, you know, why, why doesn't this board understand more about the MSBA parameters, around how this works, what schools have to be included in these options, and understanding some of the steps around this? I was just wondering about sort of your role as, as the board responsible for facilities. Thank you.
You're not well-informed, but I'll let somebody else who is not fired up right now speak.
We take the word of, whether it be the school, the School Committee, School Department, our town manager, other advisors that are here in town, and also the residents. I'm out, I go out in the street like everyone else does, I run down the Market Basket, for instance, and I'll be in there, which would take me 10, 15 minutes, it ends up taking me an hour, because people have questions. And they, they want to give me their opinion, and I listen to them. It's not just my decision. I take what everyone says, what I read, who I speak to, and I consolidate it and I decide how I have to react. And that's the way every board member here does it. We don't just, we don't just shoot from, you know, for no reason. We don't, we don't, we don't, we don't make, we don't make a statement without researching it or discussing it with people. There are times that we have to make a decision on our own. And when we do, we try to do it to the best interest of the town. With the schools right now, I, I want to see improvement in our schools, but I also have to look at the dollar. You know, I hear all the time, well, we need this, we need that, we need this. But when, if we had to come to you and say, we're going to need $300 million to do everything you want to do, you're going to see a lot of people putting their houses up for sale because taxes are going to go so high. So what we have to do now is we have to break it down. And right now, we're with, we're with the MSBCA on one project. This is our second project in town. The high school's the first, and now there's this one. And we have recommended to them that they look at rehab and additions on some of our buildings, where MSB, MSBA says we can do. MSB, they're not going to go over to the other side of town right now because they follow the children. Am I correct on that? Correct. And I want to see the same quality of schools, no matter where you drive in town, but it's going to take us time. And the only way we're going to get it done is by getting one project done or going, approved, spades in the ground, shovels in the ground, and then we go on to the next project. And this is where participation by the residents of town is the most important, because we have to hear what you're thinking. We can't just randomly say, oh, yeah, I don't think you want to worry about schools. You take someone like me, I'm 71 years old, should I care about schools? I'm not going to school, but I do because I'm worried about the future of the children. And the only way we're going to do it is by staying together, staying united, and working with everyone. Every member of this board wants nothing better than to see Wilmington flourish and be proud of it. Not because we're on a board, it's because where we live. And we love Wilmington. So as far as what we're going to do with schools, we have a master plan, and it's like anything else, no matter what you write down can be rewritten. And when we, when we finally, when, when this school project is finally determined, as soon as it's determined, we're going to have to say, we're going to have to move on to another one, because that's what we have to do. And then we just keep having to move on. But as far as support for schools, there isn't a person on this, on this board right here that won't defend building new schools, rehabbing new schools, putting additions on new schools. Why? It's for the children. It's not for me, it's not for you, it's for the children. Let's worry about the children. Let's not worry about what, that we argue over something. Let's, let's make sure the children are taken care of. And when the children are taken care of, the teachers are taken care of, the administration's taken care of, and in the whole, the town is taken care of.
Mr. Chair, I was just going to note that, you know, to, to the speaker's point, the prior speaker's point, the, certainly important to have a more global vision of what the, the whole district is going to look like. I think one of the steps towards that will be this visioning process, which was slated to happen, the, the group here consisting of our consultants and the superintendent, Paul Rogero, George Hooper, and myself, were talking about that whole visioning process, which is, I think it was, Mr. Neville had indicated was, we were looking to delay that process because we want to maximize input from residents. So it's looking like whether this fourth option is considered or not, that's going to, that process won't happen until late September, early October, when folks are back from vacations and able to focus a little bit more on this. But that visioning process, I think, is, is one step towards looking at this more global approach to schools. We can't, it's understood, and I think everybody at this table recognizes that we can't pursue school buildings in a siloed way, that there's got to be, you know, it's like a jigsaw puzzle, how is it all going to fit together? So I, I think there's recognition on that point and that we're not just building one school, but, you know, whatever, the decisions that get made, though, with respect to the options being pursued, you know, just by their nature, kind of limit your options going forward. So I think we just need to be mindful that as, as decisions get made about options to be explored, that to some measure influences your options going forward. So I appreciate your comments. I know there's, you know, a measure of frustration. I think, you know, we're all trying to do the right thing here, and we come at it from different perspectives, so, thank you.
Mr. Chair, just, I'm not too sure where the word trust is- Mr. Chair, just, I'm not too sure where the word "trust" is coming from. It's respect and I respect everybody's opinion. I mean, I may come across like I'm a mean guy, but my bark is probably worse than my bite, but I'm disappointed that you used the word "trust." I don't, I don't really understand the context of that because I trust you all with my life. If I went down now, I hope someone would give me mouth to mouth, I don't, maybe they wouldn't. So I don't, I don't know where you're talking about "trust," but I respect my colleagues in the School Committee, in the Finance Committee, in the, in the Wildwood building, of their opinion, so that, I don't get it. And as for comments about the buildings, I think they're in good shape. I talk to Mr. Hooper quite often and I think that Mr. Hull could probably attest to the fact that they're in good shape. And kudos to the custodial staff for what they do day in and day out. And each one of us goes to town meeting, right? And we vote on appropriations to make those buildings in good shape. So, you know, we, we have a, Mr. Hull makes a presentation of, in January, of everything that is gonna come up on the budget. We increase the school budget every single year, may not be as much as you want it to be, but we do. And we increase budgeting on, on buildings, on, on the infrastructure, on buying things for the DPW to make sure our roads are clear. But that's all of you, that's the town that does that. So I, I just, you know, I think the buildings are in good shape.
And, oh, one more? This'll be our last one? Nope.
I think more about when else are we gonna have an opportunity to actually look to see what could happen? This may be a terrible option, the pre-K-55. All great comments from the Select Board here about why this is not gonna be a great option, but when I think about it, I'm kinda more like, man, I wish I could really know what that could be, because maybe, just maybe, that can be a great opportunity for all of us to really do something super impactful for this town and have a great legacy that we can all leave for people in this town. And like I said, great comments from all the Select Board here, all great options, and it may not be viable, but for me personally, I like to have all the data, I like to know and make an informed decision. And if I can do something that can really help the town and help out all the students and the families that are shuttling around kids all around town, I wanna take that opportunity. So I just wanted to share my thoughts here with the Select Board and thank you for all your comments.
Thank you.
Mr. Chair, may I?
Go ahead.
Thank you, just as a follow-up, obviously, there's been some great commentary and some good questions, I just wanted to add that obviously, I agree with the, the last gentleman's point, gentleman from the School Committee, this was, this is new information that we received on Friday, so it is difficult to digest and, and like him, I, you know, hummed and hawed over it quite a bit over the, just the 48 hours that we received it. And I just wanted to add, this is a difficult one, you know, usually we like to get feedback from people, whether it's, you know, mentioned at the grocery store, for myself, being on the soccer field, or wherever we are, making calls, and people certainly call us and they most definitely email us and get, taking all that feedback, that's difficult to do when we received this on, on Friday night, but, you know, I don't, I'm not gonna sit here and make excuses for myself, but just acknowledge the fact that it is a difficult decision to make and, and regardless of the outcome, I too, obviously, have great admiration for our colleagues on the School Committee and the Finance Committee. And that's why I offered an alternative here tonight, that we would be able to hear from them, because we, as has been mentioned many times here tonight, we did receive new information just this week, but I'm certainly prepared to, to vote tonight, or if we wanna vote on the 26th, whatever the pleasure of the Chairman and the Board is, I'm fine with it. Thank you.
Thank you. Would you like to speak?
Hi, Miriam Gilazzo, 30 Roseville Road. I'm very concerned that from May 31st meeting until this weekend, the story has changed completely. We were told at the 31st meeting that there was informal conversations with the MSBA and that we would never, we wouldn't get kicked out of the program if we considered those options. That has now since changed. I am extremely concerned that if we go forward with a district-wide study, that we will be completely kicked out. And I know, you know, Doran Whittier and SMMA has said that they've had these conversations, but I have to remind everybody, this has changed since the 31st about a central wide elementary school. And quite frankly, there was lots of conversations back in 2017 and 18, what the schools wanted to put in for consolidation, and that's why the SOI letters were done the way they were done. I know tomorrow, when the FINCON meets, I will say it, that I'm not confident that we won't get kicked out of the program, or we will have significant delay. It's just not a risk that this town should take. We're in the program, we should keep going forward with the options that we have. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else? Will, did you wanna make a motion?
No, I'm good. Oh, I already made the motion to take up the Board to consider now, out of order.
Okay.
Yeah.
That's what I wanted to do.
Yeah. Number 10 on page two. Please.
I'll second.
Second. Okay, do I, I have a second? And this is-
This is just to take, as, as was-
Motion.
The first, the motion was just to take this out of order.
Just to take it out of order.
Then you're gonna look for another motion to-
Yeah. Consider.
To see whether you're gonna consider which option.
Right, okay. For taking out order, do I have a vote? We have a first and a second.
We have to do a, I'll make a motion to consider supporting our request to the Massachusetts School Building Authority to modify the current grade configuration options to be evaluated during feasibility study.
I think the, I think the motion, if I understand it, was to take it out of order, right?
Take it out of order first.
And then a separate motion would be-
Separate motion to, to vote on it.
Yeah.
Right.
Take it out of order, okay.
Oh, got it, I'm sorry.
Do I have a motion to take it out of order?
You do.
Yes, and second.
Your second? All those in favor? So moved? Now we'll actually take up the-
Mr. Sullivan made a motion to, to take his options as presented.
Yes. Do I have a second on that?
Second for discussion?
The discussion?
It sounds like the Board is gonna vote to stay the course. I'm gonna support the School Committee, I think what the School Committee is trying to do, at least to do the study, but again, I'm, I'm concerned, as, as was mentioned by a member of our FINCON, and again, you know, my problem is, is that I really would like to hear the votes of the, of the Finance Committee and the formal vote of the School Committee, but we're here, we're taking a vote. I'm gonna vote to support going, going forward with the study, I'm not sure that it's gonna happen, but that's where I'm taking it. I, you know, like I said, I, I do reserve it, you know, future times, I, I have my personal opinion about how, about the future of what the study would do, but I'd like to at least give the School Committee the opportunity to at least explore.
Okay, I could add to the discussion?
Yes.
I'm also, thank you, Mr. Chairman, gonna, gonna vote to stay the course, only for the fact that, you know, there was a great question about feedback. And the feedback that I've gotten, you know, since my time on the Board and since we started this project in, in 2018, was that we want this Wildwood project to move forward after countless meetings and community meetings and forums and surveys and, as was mentioned, the teachers were surveyed, the parents were surveyed, this is what we wanted. And, you know, although some great points have been made and, you know, and I find myself with a very difficult decision, we haven't had a lot of time to get feedback on this particular vote, so I'm gonna, I'm gonna vote in the negative. And only, and I'll just add, just only because I, I believe that there is a risk and, and at this moment, I don't think it's a risk I'm willing to take.
Okay. This motion is to accept the cost that they're taking right now with the three different programs, correct?
The original, the original proposal.
The original proposal.
And stay the course, yes.
Stay the course. Okay, all those in favor?
Stay in the course?
Stay in the course.
Current options.
Current options. It's four to one. Thank you all, appreciate it.
Thank you.
Just understand that all we're concerned with is getting Wilmington on the right course. Recession would be appropriate. Gonna take a very short recess?
Make a motion, do we take a short recess?
Second.
All those in favor?
Communications?
Yes. We're at Communications.
So first under Communications is the memo that was sent out with regard to the Wildwood School Project, I think there's been enough discussion on that, so I won't review that, that memo. Next under Communications is a memo from me with regard to addressing questions that were posed about fines for the failure to obtain prior approval on poll relocations. This came up, as you recall, because of the Verizon efforts to relocate a poll prior to getting permission, so based upon conversations with counsel, he has advised that essentially the overarching law, and actually, there was a case, Boston Edison Company versus Town of Bedford, that the state is really the ones that are responsible for overseeing the utility infrastructure and so as a consequence, cities and towns are not by themselves able to simply establish particular requirements, they, the state is looking for consistency in terms of the way utility infrastructure is handled, so as a consequence, the town does not have the ability to issue a fine, or if there was a fine to be issued, it's likely it would not prevail in court.
Mr. Chair.
Yes, sir.
Just to that point, thank you, Mr. Hull, for finding this out, because I, I believe as the one who said that we should be fining these utility companies for just throwing the poll up and then coming to us after the fact, but, so why are they coming to the Board of Selectmen anyway, if we can't do anything? We have put in, into our inhabitant bylaws, the, the ability to impose penalties-
Right.
And now, according to our town council, who should have, by the way, looked at these inhabitant bylaws for, to see if they were, you know, accurate, I guess. He's saying we can't do it, but he, but in this two thousand and five, he's talking about double polls. We, we were talking about a single poll, and, and the company's just taking it upon themselves to, to put it anyway, so. I, I guess, you know, why, why come here and, and basically, you know, waste our time? The, the only reason I, I would think that they would come here is if a, a resident doesn't want the poll placed in a particular spot on their property. And then the resident can come here and we can try our best to say no to it, but it doesn't seem like we can. So, and then the other concern is, why, why don't they go to the Conservation Commission to get approval from them, to make sure that they're not violating, you know, wetlands or somewhere where they shouldn't put a poll? I just, I, I mean, we, we have no, we have, we have no, uh...
No authority at all.
Authority, yeah, to, to, to do anything. It just doesn't, doesn't make sense to me. Other than if a resident really has a gripe and doesn't want it there, come here. Or if they're gonna put a poll there, some area where it, it shouldn't be because of wetlands or whatever the case may be, they should go there and get that permission, but I, I don't know. I, thank you for this, but it doesn't, doesn't make me feel warm and fuzzy, that we have no, no authority over them.
Mr. Chairman, thank you. Just to piggyback on Mr. Kyra's thought. You know, I think the only thing I would add there is that, you know, I agree that, you know, what's the, what's the sense if they're gonna come here, other than the fact of make the public aware of this happening? So as long as if a, a public notice went out, that the Butters were notified, you know, I don't really see the sense in having them come here. I can recall just two, three weeks ago, I think it was, we had a meeting here and we were, I think, frustrated to say the least with the circumstances, but to that resident's credit, he came and informed us.
Right.
I mean, I'm so glad he did, he did a wonderful job of doing that. And in that case, it benefited him and his family, they happened to be the only ones affected by it, so it was a no-brainer for this board to support it, but I think we all left feeling frustrated, and not to the gentleman who was just sent here to deliver the message, but just frustrated in general. I have no problem with what Mr. Kyra suggests, and other than the fact that we make sure that people are aware, I mean, obviously, some people would learn about that by witnessing it at a select meeting, but other than that, what's the point?
Well, I think the, uh, the, Mr. Chair, the, one of the points certainly is, um, to the extent, and, and clearly, there, there's no question, the frustration of kind of preemptively putting these polls in, but I think the intent by coming to the board is so that the town has an opportunity to look at the proposed location so that it's not being located on a water line or, or some other piece of infrastructure that would obviously create problems. We would have the opportunity, you know, if the system works, and clearly it doesn't always work, to, to make sure that we're not gonna see damage as a consequence of the poll.
But, Mr. Chairman, if I can, just follow up on that, but like, for example, that most recent one, was the town afforded that opportunity before they put it in, and was until afterwards, right?
It was the last two, I agree with it. I mean, if it worked, but it's not working. The last two polls that went up, went up, and then they came to us and said, hey, by the way.
Right.
I just, I mean, if it, if it's a requirement that they have to come here, then there's nothing we, they gotta, they have to come here. And I know we've sent letters to, to them to say, you know, do it the right way, but I, I just...
I, uh, I know with the last one that came up, I brought it up that there was one prior to it, and I thought there were two, but there was one prior to it. And the fact that when he said, stated that, well, this was an emergency. It was an emergency. The reason he was, even the property owner said, well, we're just worried about backing up into the pole, because it was so close to his driveway. And they didn't, they, they didn't care, and I just got frustrated with it, I said, this is ridiculous. We have, we have, we have a, a bylaw, I believe, and they don't have to abide by them, so I agree. Why not just send it over to Conservation and they'll know the, but if we wanna just keep it here, we keep it here. And when they decide to give us a, an application.
And how about polls that we see that look like they're in odd places? I go down Carthage Street onto Federal, and there's a house there with a pole right in the middle of the driveway. Now, if I were a resident, I'd be down here saying, move that pole. I mean, it seems awkward, maybe they, maybe they haven't, they like the pole there, I don't know, but for me, it, backing up, I would have a difficult time.
Mr. Chair, just the last thing I'll say is, I mean, we may not like this process, but it may be the process, and I wanna be mindful of the fact that we don't wanna interrupt service and make it more complicated for those who depend on Verizon, so how much of this do we wanna push back on? I mean, you know, at the end of the day, it's a few minutes, they come in here, and whether we like it or not, the poll's probably already up.
Yeah.
And the services continues that people are paying for, so I don't know how much we wanna obstruct that, it is frustrating for us.
No, I wouldn't wanna, I wouldn't wanna obstruct it at all, I, just...
Could I suggest one thing, Mr. Chair, through, to the town manager? I, I know at one point, there was a poll issue on Salem Street in Anthony Ave, I believe, and Paul Looney did some yeoman's work and went out there and spoke to the residents and got the poll moved appropriately to the right spot, and that's something that when, when Verizon's gonna put up a poll, they can notify us right away? Not that I wanna put more work on our engineering staff or group, but that they can take a look at it and, and make note, it's a good spot, it's a bad spot, you know? Because, I don't know if you recall that?
Yeah, I do, I do.
Yeah, and right away, he was on that and, and resolved it. So maybe if Verizon's going to be putting up a poll, if you're notified immediately upon that, then it can be reviewed.
Yeah, that's, that's certainly the intent, and I can reinforce that with Karen Levesque.
When I get the, um, the restaurant poll notification, it goes to Conservation and
Oh, goes to, okay, okay.
What was before was National Break for something that was underground condo that they had to have, and the poll location, I think they call this, what is it, Studd or something, would've been five for us, but it was the neighbors that didn't want it. Where?
Well, it's good to know.
So it's being done.
That's good to know.
Yeah, it goes to Paul. Paul, Jamie, and Val.
Thank you.
Uh, next under communication is a memo, a cover memo from me that includes information some of the board members have seen previously with regard to unaccepted ways. This is a topic I know that needs to be revisited, it's been addressed a number of times previously, but I, I think it's important to bring this back to the floor, so to speak, and the suggestion is that this be brought forward for discussion at your meeting on the twenty-sixth. So, the information that you have in the packet includes the slide presentation that Paul Looney and Valerie Gingrich did when this last came up, reported the Unaccepted Ways Committee from nineteen ninety-seven when they looked at this whole issue, and also a checklist of what is required in terms of accepting unaccepted ways, and then finally, the Town of Dedham's sample policy. So, I would encourage the board to take a look at this material, and then we'll have a conversation on the twenty-sixth with Paul and Valerie and Jamie McGoldy. Communication email from John Gregg, who is the Traffic Operations Engineer for Mastod. This deals with the issue of the cross hatch marks as you're approaching Clark Street heading south on Route thirty-eight. And the, essentially, the email conveys the point that the hash marks are really intended to discourage the, the so-called "cut over", which is people heading south on Route thirty-eight in the far-left lane, and then realizing that they, that's a left turn and trying to cut into the right lane to go straight, and that, you know, certainly could be a, a traffic hazard. I think both Jamie McGoldy and Paul Looney agree with Mr. Gregg that the intent is certainly appropriate to try to encourage people that are looking to go straight through that intersection to be melding into the right lane, so to speak. Uh, next is communication, also, there's a series of emails with Mr. Gregg from Mastod, and there's also a operational analysis that was done a few years ago with regard to the intersections at Richmond Street, Wilmington Crossing, and then the South Plaza driveway. This addresses the issue that was raised by the board at a previous meeting in terms of potentially modifying the sequencing of the signals and perhaps addressing the lane configuration, and the analysis, and this is somewhat dated, it was two thousand and fourteen, I believe, but it looked at various options, and it, I think the upshot of the review was that altering the sequencing of signals and so on is going to have a detrimental effect on the queuing time that people experience in the approaches to that, to those intersections. So, you know, it's kinda, it's, with any of these intersections, particularly the ones that are high-traffic, the, changing the sequencing and, and giving certain lanes more time has a consequence of causing backups in other areas, and I can, I think it's similar to anyone who's been through the traffic intersection at Wildwood and sixty-two, trying to take a left coming out of Wildwood, I think you can perhaps get two or maybe three cars before it turns red again, but to manipulate that then creates backups on the main road, so there's, there's no perfect solution to that, it doesn't appear.
Mr. Chair, through, to the town manager, I, when I was reading through this, I noticed that they had cross hatching as well in descriptions. Is that something that was considered to do? I see that, that it's part of the, the sky, not necessarily the sequencing of the red light, green light type of thing, but similar to what we have. Does it, does it help a person take a, a left-hand turn and a, and a right-hand turn with that?
It's in the opposite lane.
If it's on page six and seven, if you... I don't know. Just, just throwing it out there, maybe it would just cause more problems, but just trying to prevent more accidents.
I mean, if the board is so inclined, we can ask them to reevaluate this again, but this was, as I say, the data was from two thousand and fourteen, I think it was looked at right around the time either just before or right as COVID was breaking out, but I'm not sure how much the, the data will have changed between when this was done and today, but... Otherwise, if...
Oh, it's crash data, sure.
Next on the agenda, under communications, is a memo from the chair with regard to submitting comments regarding the evaluation of the town manager's position. I'll turn it over to the chair if you have any comments.
Thank you. You all got a package for it, and it's self-explanatory on the front cover, other than down towards the end of the statement, "Members are asked to complete the attached evaluation form and return the evaluation form to Beverly Dalton. It has to be returned to me."
Okay.
And that's the only correction, it is that I will, once you get them completed, you can give, give me a call, I'll run out and get them from you. But it's just that it has, it has to be returned to me and not Beverly, that's the only difference. And I apologize for my...
Mr. Chair, what date does that have, what's the draft date?
It is
July seventh.
July, yeah, July seventh.
July seventh. Thank you.
All right, so next under communications is a memo with regard to town council trainings. You'll recall in the contract for town council services, there are trainings that they provide, there's a list that you have of topics. Those that are highlighted have been addressed previously. Again, no need to make a decision tonight, but I would ask that the board take a look at the list and perhaps at the meeting on the twenty-sixth, give me some suggestions in terms of topics that you would like to see council provide training on. They will provide two training sessions at no additional cost to the town. Also, under communications, we have correspondence with regard to the reappointment of members to the Finance Committee. We had three individuals whose terms expired at the conclusion of the annual town meeting. The Appointing Committee has reappointed John Doherty, Teresa Manganielli, and Brad Jackson.
Did Brad get his signatures and everything done, did they know he had?
I believe he did. And then finally, under communications, is an email from, from Verizon Cable noting that a particular program so-called Z Living, Channel six sixty-two, has ended as of May thirty-first. Under Board to Consider, we have, the board will need to make a decision on whether to appoint special counsel for the Olin Superfund Site, New England Trans Rail, and Wilmington-Woolburn Industrial, as well as Maple Meadows. So you recall, we've had discussions previously. Currently, there are two contracts, one for town council, covers all legal matters with the exception of these environmental cases, so the board is asked to consider whether you wish to continue using a special counsel or whether you wish to bring that under the umbrella of KP.
Mr. Chairman?
Yes.
If I could, I don't wanna belabor the point because I've made my position on this pretty clear the last three or four meetings, but I'll just remind anyone who may be listening that I'm fully prepared to lose this vote, but my, my vote tonight opposing this is not in opposition to either of the councils, I think they're just fine, and they're terrific at what they do, they bring a lot of knowledge. One, one firm brings tremendous about, amount of historical knowledge, but my vote against this is more about when we sat here in, in two thousand and eighteen and hired this group, that we would transition them over a period of time, and most of us have been in a, in, in professional life, seen a transition or two, and sometimes six months or a year. I haven't personally seen one that's been six years, so that's why I, I'm a little frustrated that the transition, from what I've understand, hasn't even begun, which is frustrating, and we were told it was gonna. So, again, this isn't a knock on either firm, very fine firms, and I think they have served the town well, but I am frustrated that a transition that was promised to the town has not yet begun, so I will be voting against.
Thank you.
Mr. Chair? Yeah, I'd like to, I agree with Greg, actually, you know, I, given this, we had kinda, as we know, we've gone through this at a few of our meetings now. And I know that the thought of cost has come up, that, you know, the cost that will incur with a transition, but I also think if we keep waiting to transition, the cost's gonna rise, because as we know, the attorney fees tend to go up every couple of years, you know, incrementally, so I too am opposed to, to keeping them, I think we need to put them under one umbrella, and again, I, I, I agree, they're both fine firms, the attorneys from both places are great to work, work with, very resourceful, so it's definitely nothing, again... So it's definitely nothing against any of them. But I think we should just rip the Band-Aid off and get this done. Thank you.
Mr. Chair? I was actually on the board back in 2002, when we actually hired Dan Deutsch. And I was on the board for three years, 2002 to 2005. I heard no real issue about him. I'd been off the board for many years, and the board continued to hire Dan Deutsch as environmental counsel. That said, is, is that, I, I get it that there should, you know, should there be a transition to put everything under one umbrella? There's an argument for that. But I'm also of the argument with, you know, if it ain't broke, don't fix it. And it just appears that, other than, you know, capturing everything under one umbrella, it seems like, you know, we've got Dan Deutsch. We just got, you know, the Superfund just got an award of $48 million, I guess it is. And I don't know what, you know, what Dan Deutsch or what any environmental counsel, what their position's going to be with that. But, you know, my opinion is, is that to stay the course, at least for the next year. I mean, it appears that, you know, in reading the contract, I, I was under the sole impression that Dan Deutsch was sole counsel. But now I'm seeing that there is other counsel that assists him, Kim Salant being one. And I think there's, there's room for others that could be participating from that law firm. The other thing also is, is that, you know, as far as the cost goes, you know, we're probably, at this stage, you know, I just think that there's going to be more of a transition. I don't know, you're probably looking at, you know, maybe 10 grand or so in transition. I don't, you know, it's an unknown figure. Nobody's been able to give us even a remote figure. And I get it, you know, I understand the whole rip the Band-Aid off and bite, you know, bite the cost and all that. But it's still, when, when Dan's bill is only, I think, 10 grand a year, the last year, it's kind of like, you know, we're doubling that rate for, at least for one year to, for what? You know, I'm just, I'm just kind of not sure that it's a good idea at this time. And I, and I respect Gregg. I've listened to you, you know, respectfully, I've heard you for several years, you know, sitting out in the audience or on TV, saying exactly as you've said, that we should put it, you know, put things under the umbrella. And, and it goes with that, you know, respect term that we heard earlier today. I respect your decision, you know, you're, you're bringing this up and, you know, and, and, you know, maybe you get it, maybe you don't. But I think that, you know, I respect your position in bringing it up, and also the board's respect for whichever way we vote.
Mr. Chair, I could just respond.
Go ahead.
Thank you. And obviously, it's a mutual respect, Mr. West and I totally am fine with your position. And however it turns out here tonight, it will be. But the only thing I want to just add is that your position is the one that I had just a year ago, right here at this table, where I said, you know, I'll vote for this because, you know, I, you know, it's, it's not that much money, but we ought to get a transition going. But if this happens again next year, I'm not going to be able to support it. Well, here we are, a year later. And, you know, whether it's $10,000, $10, the town is paying two attorneys to do what was promised to us, to transition under a new, and I think it was a wise decision at the time. And it was at the suggestion, I think, of some residents, that we keep that person on, and we did. And, but here we are, going to the sixth year, there's been no transition. That's my frustration. So again, 10,000, maybe it's not a lot to some, it's probably a lot to, to many others. We were promised a transition, that hasn't happened.
But if I, if I made just one comment, we're currently not paying two attorneys to do the same work. We are paying two law firms
Correct.
To do work.
I stand corrected, yes. But we, the fact is, we have two law firms.
And the transition, if, if the vote, if the vote goes, we would be paying two law firms to transition ultimately back to one law firm to resume the bill. I, I, I certainly understand that.
I just wanted to add that KP is, after transition, of course, is $70 less an hour. So there is cost savings there as to after the initial transition.
I
No, go ahead.
No, go ahead, Mr. Chair.
No, I, I, when, when will it take place? When will the transition take place? I, I, I mean, KP Law was hired in 2018, as Mr. Bendel said. You make some good points, you make good points as well. You know, the, the issue I have is that Mr. Deutsch has a lot of institutional knowledge. And we're coming to what looks to be a critical point in, in this dealing with the cleanup at, at Olin. But again, at some point, we have to transition over. Do we do it right now? I'm not too sure that that's the way to go. But we cannot continue to keep them for the next 10 or 15 or 20 years. I mean, there has to be a point in time where we say, you know, we got to come under one roof. And what is the plan for that to happen? I mean, are we going to start to plan for that so that it comes under KP? I think it should come under one law firm. I think it should come under KP, that's our primary attorney. But again, I don't have a problem at this point in time staying with Mr. Deutsch because of the situation that's taking place today. But at some point, you know, we, we can't continue to go this course.
Mr. Chair, so it, it sounds to me like the, the ultimate goal is, is to have everything under one roof. So there's really no reason, if that's the ultimate goal for delay, quite frankly, at this point. I mean, I, I've had conversations with both Dan Deutsch and with Mark Rich. You know, Dan understands the board's desire to have things under one roof. He doesn't, you know, he doesn't have any, from what I gather, any hard feelings, so to speak. He understands, you know, this is a business decision. In talking with both of them, I think the transition would involve conversations between the two attorneys, as well as obviously transitioning electronic and hard copy files. From what I'm gathering, it's, it may take a few weeks, but I don't think it's going to be something, you know, that's going to take months. You know, one of the things that will need to happen is certainly the more important elements of these cases will have to be transferred. But again, I think that's certainly possible and is not going to take, take an extended period of time. If, if the board is intending to make a transition, as I indicated, I believe in one of my memos here, it would seem to me now is the time to do it because if the town is, gets to a point where the town itself engages in legal action, it's better to have the attorney that you want for the long haul as opposed to, you know, being in the process of potentially transitioning. You know, I, I think that's probably the most, one of the most important points to consider. There, there is no, currently, no active litigation between the town and Olin or any of the parties to this. But if there was to be litigation going forward, and, and that litigation had Dan Deutsch and his firm representing the town, and then there was a desire to trans, transition, I think it would be a bit more challenging, obviously.
Mr. Chairman, one point that I'd like to reiterate is that, as Mr. West said, you, you were on the board when you hired him in 2002, 21 years ago. We're pretty lucky that this, this group hasn't moved on in life, whether it's made, made a career change or gone in a different direction or retired or whatever. We're pretty lucky, because had that happened, we have had no transition. So just want to point out that we've been pretty lucky, but how long do we want to risk being lucky? What if they make a different, a change in life and make a, decide to go in a different way? We'd be without a transition at all. So whatever happens, I think we need to start that transition sooner than later.
Mr. Chairman, to that point, we're not, we, we don't hire Dan Deutsch. We hire the law firm of
Brooks and Durensis.
Brooks and Durensis. So if something should happen with Mr. Deutsch, Attorney Deutsch, I'm assuming, big word assume, that there will be another, hopefully competent attorney that will be, that Brooks and Durensis will hire to, to, to replace him. You know, none of us are replaceable. You know, every one of us, I got a transition in our jobs, in our careers, and, you know, over time. But again, you know, I've heard no strong argument other than to put things under one roof to get rid of, you know, I shouldn't say get rid of, but to change from Brooks and Durensis to KP Law. And do we necessarily have to keep things under, you know, you know, one umbrella? I mean, it's, maybe it's a good thing to have differing law firms, to have different opinions. I mean, you know, Mark, our current town council is getting all of the information. He's reading it. Again, he's not spending hours commenting and coming up with any type of legal strategies. But in the same token, I would assume that if there was something that was glaring, that he would talk to, you know, our town manager and say, hey, you know, I just got this document, and paragraph three, you know, again, I'm not your special counsel, but paragraph three just kind of looks a little alarming to me. You might want to talk to, you know, talk to your environmental counsel, Dan, Dan Deutsch, about it.
Through the, through the chair, question on the compensation number three. Well, did prior contracts? I, I thought it was just Dan Deutsch. I didn't know that we hired other attorneys in, in the firm. This is new.
No, no, this, this has been in the contract, yeah.
Because I didn't notice it before.
The, the, the two other individuals from the conversations that I've had with Dan, and I haven't specifically asked the question about the two referenced attorneys, but it's my understanding that the vast majority of the work is done by Dan. You know, the, I, I don't really believe, and I've, I've never communicated on these issues with either of the other attorneys. So it's kind of my conclusion that, that he's really the one that's been doing the work, not to say that the others couldn't. You know, in any law firm, obviously, we have point people for certain, certain categories of, of law. We had Jonathan Silverstein, you'll recall, was the point person on zoning. He ultimately went to another firm, and now we have Alex Weisich. So, you know, certainly people move on and, you know, it, we, Alex has been very good, and we've been able to continue. So I, you know, I, I think Dan has certainly been very, very competent in terms of the advice he has given the town. I have not heard from any members of the board that there's a question about his legal expertise. It seems to me that the issue, I guess, is whether you want to have counsel for environmental matters under the same firm.
I, I've been thinking about this for quite a while. Mr. Bendel had brought it up that this has been a transition that's supposed to have happened quite a long time ago.
Never a specification, just to be clear, but
No, yeah. And I'm, I feel that it would, would be better, after reviewing everything, having, having this, having the environmental concerns brought under the umbrella of KP Law myself. So, do I have a motion to transfer Towns' legal work from Brooklyn to Senza to KP Law? I believe that's the way I'd have to
Yes, it would be a motion to transition the environmental work, specifically Olin, New England Trans Rail, Maple Meadow, to KP Law, effective 7/1/2023.
Do I have a motion?
Can I ask for clarification before the motion's
Yes, sir.
So based on our agenda, it's for us to consider signing the contract for services for fiscal year 2024. So I'm trying to keep
Right, so we have to do those considerations first?
Well, so the So I wondered if, could this contract be amended to include a transition period?
Mr. Chair, the, first of all, the, not knowing how, how the board was going to make, decide on this, I've included both the, a contract that the board would, would sign with Brooks and Durensis in the event that you wanted to continue for another year with Brooks and Durensis. And then separately, there's a contract for services from KP Law. That KP Law contract also contemplates the prospect of having the, taking over the, the other services. So just again, not knowing the, the outcome of this. So from what I gather in talking to both attorneys, it seems that the transition can happen relatively readily. I don't think we would need to have like a six-month period or for transition. I think it, you know, they'll, I mean, it, it's, in some respects, similar to the transition that took place when Deutsch-Williams transitioned to KP, except on a smaller scale to some measure.
Mr. Chair, may I make a suggestion? Can I suggest we take up the board's consider, consider signing contract for special counsel services for fiscal year 2024? And if the outcome of that is in favor of not signing it, then we amend the next one to, to say that signing Town Council's contract for fiscal year 2024, and add an amendment that it includes taking over the, the environmental. Does that make sense? Something along the lines of that? It's kind of dependent on it, right?
So I would suggest that the board, first of all, consider number six, which is whether you're seeking to continue with special counsel. If the vote is no, then, 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 then the next, number seven becomes moot because there would not be a contract with Brooks and Durensis.
So I'll make a motion on appointment of special counsel for Olin Superfund site. New England Trans, Wilmington-Wilburn Industrial, Maple Meadow, Landville, filled, appointment of special counsel. I make a motion to appoint KP Law.
Okay, so what the first thing we want, I believe, want to do is, board to consider on the seven, signing the contract for special counsel.
Well, we're going to take a vote on six first.
Oh, six first, that's right.
The motion I just made to appoint KP Law as special counsel for Olin Superfund, as written.
Point of clarification to the manager, through the chairman to the manager, is that the special counsel that's referenced in this agenda item? Or was this special counsel referring to Brooks and Durensis?
It was to consider whether the board wished to continue with special counsel. So if the board does not wish to consider, to, to continue with special counsel, then, then the motion would be to, you know, discontinue special counsel services because presumably the counsel would be under one roof.
Okay, so it would be
So I withdraw my motion. Getting confused here.
Yes, I would suggest you withdraw your motion.
My motion.
And perhaps the motion should read to, if, if the, if the intent is to discontinue special counsel services, that a motion that the board discontinue the special counsel services with Brooks and Durensis for the Olin Superfund site, New England Trans Rail, Wilmington-Wilburn Intermodal, and Maple Meadow Landville.
I make the motion as stated by Mr. Hall.
Do I have a second?
Second for discussion. So I just want to be clear that this vote is to discontinue services with Brooks and Durensis.
Correct.
Correct.
Okay, thank you.
In doing so, the assumption is, is that it would come under KP, but, right?
Yes.
Yeah, so the services that Brooks and Durensis has today, if it's a, if it's to, to do away with their services, then KP will be taking this over, and there'll be a normal transitional period that would take place.
That's right. So if the board votes to that effect, then I will send a, a letter to KP, to Mark Rich, indicating that the board's decision is to have his firm represent indicating that the board's decision is to have his firm represent the town with regard to these matters.
And a letter would go out to Dan Deutsch and Brooks and Durensis, thanking them for their twenty-one-plus years of service.
Right.
And at this time, we're heading in a different direction, and please begin the transition phase.
Yes.
Question also? Sorry, if.
Go ahead.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. If the vote goes that we end the relationship with Brooks and Durensis, and there's still transition past July first, how do we pay them? Because they're technically not in contract. Or is it just, is there an assumption that, you know, let's say that the transition goes through, I'm just making up a date, July fifteenth. So with fifteen days technically out of contract, how do, how do we pay for that?
Through the chair. I, I believe we did that, Sloughman West, when, when we transitioned from KP, when we transitioned from Durensis to KP, there was a timeframe that was negotiated for their services with the town manager, unless I'm, as I recall.
Yeah, I, I don't recall the particular timeframe, but it was a relatively brief time.
Yeah.
But certainly to the extent that, that they're having conversations, then, you know, Brooks and Durensis would be paid for their time as well as KP.
We're still under discussion, Mr. Chairman. I'll just add that obviously KP has reiterated to us on a number of occasions that they're willing to take this on. I'm disappointed it hasn't happened yet, but that's in the past, and that they were fully capable of taking on this particular issue. They have noted on a number of occasions that they've overseen other superfund site projects. They represent a third of the state, or maybe half, a hundred and fifty communities, or whatever it is. They have a staff larger than most. I feel very confident that they can take this very important issue going forward. If there, if there is a transition period, I feel more comfortable voting for this, knowing that there will be a transition period. That's what I wanted to be clear on. I don't want to just.
Yep, no, I could.
Heartways without making sure that this information, this knowledge, that this firm has caught up to speed and they can carry the torch for, you know, as was mentioned earlier, I mean, you know, ten, you know, turns into twenty thousand, thirty thousand, forty thousand, fifty thousand, all of a sudden, you know, it can really pile up. So we're paying a really good firm, and we ought to make sure that they, they are caught up to speed. So I'm glad to hear that there'll be a transition.
Okay. On this motion, do I have any? All those in favor? We, it's three to two. All those opposed?
Say all opposed. You should probably say all opposed.
Pardon me?
You should probably say all opposed.
Yeah, all opposed? Okay. Now.
So then, board to consider number seven, which was the signing of the contract with special counsel, that can be passed over. There's no, no need for that. Then the board to consider signing the town council contract for fiscal year two thousand twenty-four. This contract is with KP Law. The changes to the contract, other than the dates, include their rate has gone from two-twenty per hour to two-thirty. Their paralegal rate has been adjusted to one-fifteen per hour. And you'll also note in the back of the contract, there's an attachment that references the specialty legal services. There are certain categories of legal service that there's a different rate beyond the two-thirty. So, as was noted previously, in the case of these environmental matters, their rate is three hundred dollars per hour. So the board would be asked to authorize the KP contract.
Second.
Discussion? I just want to clarify, having them take over a special counsel and stuff, that just will fall under this umbrella. We don't need to amend anything as, as far as that's concerned, because that'll just be other services like in the back.
That's right.
Okay, thank you.
Any other questions?
No.
All those in favor? All those opposed?
Zero.
Five oh.
Next, board to consider was already addressed, the redirecting of ARPA funds, so we can pass on that.
Ten to.
Ten as well. Board to consider authorizing submission of a townwide lead services, lead service line inventory grant. So the Environmental Protection Agency is now requiring that public water districts have a inventory of the service connections to their distribution system. Certainly the town, if, if necessary, can do this work in-house. It's going to take some amount of time, but DEP offers a grant, and the amount that we have, we could put in for is two hundred and fourteen thousand, seven hundred and ninety-five dollars. In order to do this, it would be necessary for the board to authorize me to apply for that grant.
Move to grant the request?
Second.
Discussion? All those in favor? Five oh.
Next is a board to consider accepting, this, accepting grants received by the town. This is a annual requirement. As you know, the town receives grants at various points during the course of the year. There's a memo here from the finance director, Brian Perry, regarding a number of different grants that were received, ranging from public safety grant, five thousand dollars, elderly services grant, seventy-two thousand, one sixty-eight, library, forty-four thousand, three thirteen, Public Works, this is the chapter ninety-seven, eighty-nine, two seventy-one, ninety-one, the arts council, nine thousand, fire department, ninety-five hundred dollars, DPW, two hundred and thirty-six thousand, twenty-five, another grant for public safety, fifty thousand dollars, fire, eighteen thousand, eight ninety-two, the D, Public Works, three hundred and twenty-two thousand, fifty-five, fifty-five dollars and twenty-seven cents. And then seventy-five thousand was received in an earmark for the high school track, fifty thousand dollars to the DPW for sidewalk engineering on Andover Street, three hundred thousand from the health department as part of that tri-town grant, and then nine thousand from the Wilmington Community Fund to the police department. And then also, you'll recall, we received funding, although it's a grant, it's not actual dollar amount, but technical services for the technology, from the Technology Services and Security Agency. So essentially, we received one million, nine hundred and ninety thousand, two twenty-five. So the board is asked to take a vote to accept these funds.
Motion to accept these funds?
I move to accept the grants with great gratitude.
Second.
All those in favor? Five oh.
The next one was taken up previously. Then the board to consider a request from Khalid Hesmeel, Tony's Ice Cream, to obtain a Hawk and Pedal license to sell ice cream. The health director approves of his request for a Hawk and Pedal license.
Make a motion that we accept and approve?
Second for discussion? I just want to make sure that all the necessary documents are here to, to grant the approval, Mr. Manager.
Yes.
There was an issue last time about.
Yes, as it turned out, the, the last time, the health director had indicated that she did not, had not signed off on his license in terms of the inspection to the truck. As it turned out, she was mistaken. Apparently, his brother had made a similar request, and she mixed, mixed the two of them up. So unfortunately, he was delayed, but his vehicle has been inspected.
Okay.
She's fine with it, and it's good to go.
Thank you.
So I would entertain a motion from the board to, to authorize the Hawk and Pedal license for Tony's Ice Cream.
It's been moved in second, so.
Yeah, moved.
All in favor?
All in favor?
Next, the board to consider the request of Michael Irving, Wilmington Boy Scouts, PAC one-twenty-six, to use the municipal parking lot at the Middlesex, Middlesex Ave for a fundraising car wash on Sunday, July sixteenth, from nine-thirty a.m. to one p.m.
Move to grant the request.
Second.
Just discussion, no rain date?
No.
All those in favor? So moved.
Next is a request of Lisa Seer from the Wilmington High School Hockey Boosters Club to use the municipal parking lot for a fundraiser car wash on Sunday, September third, from nine to noon.
So moved.
Second.
All those in favor? So moved.
Just want to sign this, sir. Just as a note before I continue, so we have a, a number of, of groups that have requested access to the Swain parking lot for car washes, and there's actually one that came in just recently that would be for the board's consideration for an August date. So at this point, the, I think it would be advisable for us to just note on our website that the various dates are all used for this year. So typically, what we try to do is, in, in certain circumstances, obviously, if somebody's got a rain date, then that one is committed, so to speak. But we're also trying to avoid having instances where a group has, you know, next weekend, for example, as the date, and then somebody comes in and tries to schedule the week before. So, so with the board's okay, we will post that we're done for the season.
I'm okay with that.
Next, under board to consider, request from Kristen DeMonico, Soul Sisters Running Club, to use the town common on June seventeenth, July fifteenth, August nineteenth, from seven to nine. Essentially, they just want to have a staging area for the folks to gather and before they go off on their various running routes for the day.
Move to grant the request.
Second.
All those in favor?
Next is a board to consider the request of Lauren Newbor to use Rotary Park on Friday, June sixteenth, two thousand twenty-three, from five p.m. to six p.m. for Girl Scout bridging ceremony. I would just note that it's been brought to our attention that Little League has that space permitted. We're not sure, we haven't been able to confirm whether there's a game that evening. So I would suggest that the board authorize the request, if it's available, in the, in the event that the Little League has a game, that the secondary option would be the Swain Green. Obviously, parking is tough at the Rotary Park, and so if there's a game going on, they may not have the ability to park over there.
Make a motion that we accept this as, for the six sixteen, six sixteen, as long as it's open.
And the use of the Swain in a.
As a backup.
Right.
So moved.
Second.
Just, just a quick comment. They're not going to use the, the ball field. They're going to use outside the ball field. So is it because T-ball plays out there that they can't use that?
I think it was more about parking.
It's more about parking. If, if there's a game going on, I just don't know if they're going to have access to parking on Adelaide. Has that been approved?
Yeah, all those in favor?
Oh, yep.
That brings us to public comments.
Yes.
Sullivan sixty, Long Island Street. So, well, actually, I came here for two other reasons tonight, when I wanted to play a game on the town council vote, and how disappointed I am.
Excuse me, do they want to give you a mic?
Oh, thank you.
So, I was, came here for a couple of other reasons tonight, but I just wanted to just throw some comments out there about the town council vote and how disappointed I am. I've been working on this site now for twenty-eight years, right? Twenty-eight years. And it's finally, stuff is finally starting to happen. There's a consent decree that's just been done, and I don't know how many board members are aware of this consent decree or what's going on. But I just don't feel like this was the right time to pull the rug out from under Dan Deutsch. He has a lot of institutional knowledge. In twenty-one years, he's been working on this site. And every time you get somebody new, it takes you a long time to catch up. We've had three project managers since EPA took over the site in two thousand and seven. And every time someone takes something over, you lose time, you lose knowledge, you have to get them up to speed. So I just think it was the wrong time. I understand you want to do the transition. I guess I understand. I really don't understand. If someone's doing a good job on something, why do you want to take them off that job? After twenty-one years of them working on something that has impacted this town so much, you can miss just one little thing, and it could cost you a lot. Just one little thing. I just don't understand. But anyways, that wasn't why I came here tonight, but I'm just disappointed. I also disappointed with the town, and I know the board must be aware of this also. I would hope that you are, that the town is a party to a lawsuit against Mass DEP because they are putting restrictions, are trying to put restrictions on registrations, which is our water supply during drought, for outdoor watering. And the town of Wilmington signed on to a lawsuit for that. And I'm really disappointed. Drought, like, we can't regulate what people do with water during a drought, when they can water their lawns? It's very disappointing. You know, this town constantly says that it cares about our water resources, but then we turn around and we do another thing like this. I think the board should reconsider being a party to that lawsuit. Do you think that it's right for somebody to water their lawn when we're in a drought?
I didn't vote on any lawsuits, I'm not.
Well, the town is a party to that lawsuit, and that's why I'm here tonight, is to let the board know that we're a party to that lawsuit, and that I personally find it horrible that the town is a party to that lawsuit. We've waited for decades to try to get restrictions on registered water withdrawals for water conservation, things like drought. It's, it doesn't do anything but address watering outside during a drought, and the town even fights that. So I just wanted to let the, the board know about that, and I'm deeply disappointed in that. The other issue I came here tonight about was after the Supreme Court ruling that said that isolated wetlands are no longer protected under the Wetlands Protection Act. The state also does not protect isolated wetlands, so that means things like vernal pools and isolated wetlands right now in the town of Wilmington are unprotected. I, I'm asking, has the, the town, or the board, or anybody considered that our wetlands are under, could potentially be under assault by a developer that could come in and fill large, isolated wetlands and vernal pools? And I wonder. And, um, I wonder if the board has, or the town has asked council what to, what the analysis i- is on that, and I know right now the state's scrambling to try to figure out what to do about it also. But, uh, a lot of other towns have bylaws, and the town of Wilmington has no bylaws. We don't have any bylaws that protect isolated wetlands because the mindset was, why would we have bylaws to protect isolated wetlands when they're protected under the Wetlands Protection Act? They're no longer protected under the Isla- the Wetlands Protection Act. So vernal pools, for instance, can actually be filled. So I'm asking the board to, to look into that, or the town to look into that and, and maybe take action or make recommendations or do some kind of an analysis. Thank you.
Let's tell the manager to, yeah, have that for next meeting possible?
Yep.
Thank you. Thank you. Are we...
Announcements? Uh, announcements? Announcements?
Oh, announcements, any announcements?
Mr. Chairman, if I can, just wanted to, uh, acknowledge that today, June twelfth, believe it or not, is National Women's Veterans Day, uh, and that was enacted in nineteen forties, uh, to celebrate women being able to enlist in the military. And, uh, I thought it was fitting that we, uh, mentioned that tonight since it is June twelfth, and, uh, in just a little bit, I'd like to, uh, make sure we honor, um, a female veteran just a few minutes from now, in, in, in the spirit of National Women's Veterans Day.
Thank you.
So I wanna thank all female veterans and all veterans.
Well, mine is less, less important than that, but I'm, no, no, that's awesome, I'm glad you brought that up. I just wanted to congratulate the Shawshin Rams baseball team, Barstow baseball team. They had their last, uh, game of the season today in the, um, vocational championship, and unfortunately, they lost five-three, but they played a heck of a game, and, uh, they had a great season. So they have nothing to be, uh, to look down upon themselves. They're a great group of guys, uh, the coaches are fantastic, the fans, the families, great, great group, and it's been my pri- privilege to watch them over the last, uh, three, could've been four if it wasn't for COVID, but three years, um, and i- it's just been great. So I just wanna send a big congrats to them.
Thank you.
A couple of things real quick. I just wanna let the board know that I attended last Friday, the MMA put on a, uh, new Select Board Member Conference. I went to that a week, uh, this past Friday over at Fort Devens. And the other thing is, is that I just wanted to congratulate the Historic Commission. They put on a, um, a celebration of the fiftieth anniversary of the purchase, town purchase of the Hyrton Tavern. Um, I know, uh, Town Manager Jeff made a, uh, made a speech, and I know you were in attendance also, Gary, so, again, I just wanted to say congratulations to both, I guess, to the town for, uh, having a historical treasure. And the other thing, going with that building, a couple of days from now, on June fourteenth, which is Flag Day, uh, I know it's under important dates, but I'd just throw a quick, uh, plug in for the Wilmington Minutemen, as they're doing a flag retirement ceremony on June fourteenth at six-thirty over behind the tavern over at Minutemen Headquarters. So if any of the board members, public are certainly welcome to attend, um, uh, the organization collects unserviceable flags throughout the year, and there's a ton of flags that they're gonna retire with dignity at that event, and certainly people can, uh, bring their own flag if they have a flag they'd like to retire.
Thank you. Any other announcements, or...
Uh, so under important dates, uh... New business.
Any new business?
Yeah, Mr. Uh, Mr. Chairman, yeah, I actually have two items. Uh, one, I had asked the question at the last meeting about, uh, and, and again, I think it kinda morphed into a whole discussion. I was asking about specifically if Main Streets, more specifically, I'd say from, like, the town, uh, you know, Market Basket up to the town center, you know, Church Street, that, you know, they, if it could be, uh, striped. I'm not asking for any repairs. I mean, certainly there's some repairs that could be used to that road as well, but if you go down that strap, that strip, there's sections on there that you can't see either the yellow line, which divides incoming, you know, cross traffic, and then there's where it's two lanes, there's, there's sections that it's, you know, you got the white stripe in the middle that really you can't see. So is it a, you know, does it become a one-lane road, a two-lane road, you know, just, you know, a lot of us know that, but certainly out of town is might, you know, just trying to prevent some accidents or anything if there's...
Thank you.
There's anything, and again, I, I'm understanding that it's a state highway, so I know that we can't do it, it's gotta be through the state, but I think if we can have that discussion with the state to see if we could do. Uh, the other thing I was wondering is that, I know over the years, I, I know we're over our ten percent over in affordable housing right now in relation to our forty B, but I'm wondering over the next few meetings, is it possible to bring in our Planning Director, Planning and Conservation Director, you know, because she said over the years, she, I've heard her say at many meetings that there are, you know, she calls it tools in the toolbox that we can use to keep us above that ten percent threshold. And again, I'm not saying that we need to enact any of these tools, but it's, you know, we, I think just for, for our awareness and, you know, for town awareness is, are there things that we can be doing to be proactive to make sure that we're above our affordable housing goals? And again, I'm not, you know, if we have a busy meeting, next meeting, that's fine, but I'm just thinking over the summer, uh, into the fall, if there's anything that, you know, I, I'm just guessing, if there's something that warrants a town meeting article, we've certainly got months to prepare as opposed to having her come in in February and we're essentially writing the, uh, writing the warrant and not being able to incorporate anything. And, and again, I'm not suggesting there's anything that needs to be done, but it'd just be nice to hear if there are, you know, are things that we should be doing.
And, uh, through the chair, uh, to the Town Manager, just correct me if I'm not right with this, but in Ms. Gingrich's prior, um, presentations to us, uh, once we meet that ten percent threshold, that is for ten years. So we're good for ten years. Uh, and then we have, um, you know, the, the, the...
Princeton.
We have, yeah, Princeton coming in, we have, uh, if there are new building projects, a certain percentage has to go towards it, uh, was it inclusionary, uh, uh, bylaw. So I di- I think we have our, our tools in place, and I'm not saying that she shouldn't come here and give an overview again, but I'm just letting you know that we have ten years to, not to put it out for ten years, but I mean, we do have some time.
But we did fall below the ten, ten year, ten percent threshold.
Well, yeah, and there's reasons for that, that we don't wanna go down that street, but...
And I'm certainly understanding that, but, you know, could there be other pro- you know, could something happen that we could somehow end up below the ten percent threshold? I'm just trying to, you know, if we could just get some sort of an overview of things that this board could be doing in the hopefully unlikely event that we fall below the ten percent threshold, that we can prepare, that we can, um, you know, essentially do in advance to keep ourselves above. Again, I'm not looking for any specific actions from the board based on her discussion, but just trying to get, you know, both from the board's perspective, the town's perspective, and, and the audience, if there's things that can be done, that's all.
And, and I think there's another development over near Lowell Street, right? There's another fifty apartment units going in there as well.
Just two.
So, Mr. Chair, there are two things. One is, um, I can certainly have Valerie Gingrich come in and speak to the various options that are available to, uh, foster more affordable housing units. Uh, separate but somewhat related is the, uh, issue of, um, the housing choice legislation, which as you recall, um, she submitted on, a- after consulting with the board, uh, the, uh, action plan, so to speak, uh, for, uh, to keep us in at least interim compliance, uh, with the state. Uh, the next step, of course, is, uh, a decision will be, will have to be made, uh, before December thirty-first of two thousand and twenty-four on whether, uh, the town is gonna create a buy right zone, uh, for multi-family housing. So in, in, uh, communities that are within the MBTA district, uh, are required to, uh, follow up on this, and she's made prior presentations, but I believe, and I have her on the docket for coming in to the board's meeting on the twenty-sixth to talk about that, but separately, we can have her come in and talk about other options for affordable housing.
Thank you. Now, important dates.
Uh, important dates, uh, so on Sundays through October first, we have the farmer's market, uh, the Town Common Parking Lot, ten a.m. to one p.m. Uh, June thirteenth, tomorrow evening, is the Finance Committee, uh, Town Hall, Room Nine, seven p.m. Uh, June fourteenth, the Senior Center Building Committee, uh, meets Town Hall, Room Nine, six p.m. Also, July, uh, June fourteenth, uh, flag retirement ceremony, as was previously noted, at Minuteman Headquarters, six p.m. Uh, June nineteenth is, uh, Juneteenth, Independence Day, town offices are closed. Uh, June twenty-first, the Wildwood School Building Committee, Wilmington High School, uh, Room one dash zero six-two, uh, six p.m. Uh, Select Board meets again on June twenty-sixth, right here, Room Nine, si- seven p.m. Uh, June twenty-ninth is the Fourth of July festivities of the kickoff. Uh, for more information, you can contact nine seven eight six five seven eight zero eight one, funonthefourth.com is where you go if you're, uh, wanna go online. Uh, tho- those events are taking place on the Town Common. Uh, July first, uh, Family Day, Town Common. Uh, July second is the, uh, fireworks, and of course, July fourth is, uh, Independence Day. Uh, July twelfth, uh, brush drop-off Old Main Street, eight a.m. to two p.m. Uh, again, July fifteenth, uh, brush drop-off Old Main Street, nine a.m. to four p.m., and then July seventeenth is the next Select Board's meeting, Room Nine, seven p.m.
Now, I'll turn it over to Selectman Bendo for salute service.
Thank you, Mr. Chair, and, and I'd be remiss if I didn't thank our Veterans Office for putting on, um, wonderful Memorial Day ceremonies to commemorate those who have paid the ultimate sacrifice. I wanna thank them, and I wanna thank all the residents who joined us, um, at the Veterans Lot for a wonderful ceremony. Uh, but, uh, it's my uh, privilege to present this tonight on behalf of the board in honor of National Women's Veterans Day, uh, to Mrs. Catherine Ward Bjork, uh, who served in the United States Air Force starting in August fifth of nineteen fifty-seven. She served in the Headquarters Company, Eight-hundred-and-fourteenth Air Base Group, and was designated to the Combat Group Strategic Air Command. Catherine chose to be actually a model for the U.S. Air Force recruiting campaign, and later, after her service, modeled for Polaroid camera for a short time. She went on to wed Paul Bjork, her the love of her life, and in January nineteen sixty-six, they enjoyed, uh, fifty fair, fifty-five years of marriage before, uh, his passing in two thousand and twenty. Catherine and Paul loved, uh, each other and loved their family. They had two beautiful children that they raised here, Karen, and someone who's no stranger to this board and to our community, uh, Steve Bjork. Uh, and Catherine went on to say, often say that one of the best decisions she ever made was to live here and raise her family in Wilmington. She took great care in their home, but also in the community. She served, uh, and volunteered many times at the Woburn Street School, uh, and also the Wilmington Figure Skating Program. Unfortunately, Catherine passed away just recently, May twenty-seventh, two thousand and twenty-three. We send our condolences to Steve and the entire Bjork family, but tonight, we wanted to honor her service to our community and to our country, uh, and tonight, we salute Catherine Ward Bjork. Thank you for your service, and if there's no objection, I'd like that we give this cer- certification, uh, certificate to Steve in her honor.
Yes, absolutely.
Thank you.
I have a motion to adjourn for the evening.
Second.
All those in favor? Good night, everyone.